Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 3, 2024 Town Runway Planning Board Meeting.
Hello?
Okay, we'll have plenty of time for chatting, of course. No, let's talk. The DILIS informed us that she was not able to be here this evening, but we have enough planning board members to constitute a quorum. So we'll proceed with the posted agenda stands, I believe, with no changes that I'm aware of. All right, Jim is reminding me that he'd like him over at the end of the meeting again to get feedback on workforce housing if you have any to offer. So then receive Jim's meeting notes for this evening, any comments, questions. Hearing none, may I hear a motion to accept the meeting notes? Motion is second, all those in favor? Posed, abstention, the motion carries. You have in draft form the August 19 minutes. Any corrections, additions? I have a motion, second please. Second, all those in favor? Posed, abstention, the motion carries. I have no correspondence or announcements. Anyone else? And can you bring them forward? All right, then we'll move into the new application portion of this evening's meeting. The first new application to come before us is that of Drake Miller. Seventy-eight to ninety Salisbury Turnpike site plan, a UN wetlands permit for an addition in Minnesota. Is there someone here to present? Please come out and introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to do.
Hello, my name is Drake Miller. So, hello. And what we are applying to is just upgrade the house with a remodel and addition. It was, or is, a three-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath, and we should only make four-bedroom, three-and-a-half bath to accommodate growing family. My wife and I have two daughters that we're raising in this house. And we just want to make it a nice home. We're going to do like high-efficiency sort of stuff, keep it low-carbon, all-electric. Just thinking about maximizing environmental impact with the bath as we call it, as a base. Do you have, I can answer a question. What we have to do is update the septic system.
Do you want to speak in the light of the policy system?
Don't check that it's on.
Okay, you're there. Not on here. One thing that we are approved to do is completely rebuild the septic system. So this is, I think, an outdated, this is an existing septic system which is not approved for bedrooms. So we have, it should be in the documents, it should be an updated approval sort of drawing for the new system. It's not in this, and it would be...
Susan, you have a little county health?
Yes.
For the expansion?
Yeah. Get it, should we, or should we? Surprise, we're outside. How do you answer questions?
Okay, Jim?
So county health is one issue, so if they're in there, we'll find them. If not, we'll get in touch and get that sheet pulled up from here. So as I put in my notes, the parcel contains both DC and federal wetlands as well as the floodplain. The proposed work is outside of the floodplain and beyond the 100-foot DC wetland buffer area. But it is within the 100-foot federal wetland buffer, that's the only town that has water, it's about the buffer work. The proposal will increase the footprint of the existing house by modestly, not mostly, but not entirely westward toward the DC wetland, which is essentially a ditch or swale, I guess you'd say. The addition that's being put on.
Okay, there's something I'd like to take from this to see.
I think if I'm correct, this is the addition, the bump-out here, this one exists, and then a little bit of area on the side as well. So the wetland we're talking about runs in front of the house here, the other one is...
That's interesting, these documents are updated so far. Make sure you have the updated drawing.
The other floodplain is down here, all the way from where this is taken place. The reason we're here is because the floodplain has along the front here. And I said, well, the addition will create disturbance within the buffer area to the north, which is toward the road. It is an existing ditch or swale. The addition isn't extending further toward the federal wetland, and the house does already have kind of a bump-out area. So we're not actually extending any closer to the wetland than the house does now in terms of general footprint. Well, does it have a modest footprint toward the federal wetland, it's well outside that buffer area. As long as, I think, as long as proper sediment erosion control construction logistics are put into place. I don't see any finding issue with it. I had asked that if it was feasible that these areas be made for construction, coming in materials to access. Here it would be added onto from behind the house instead of in front of it. The material is stockpiled, you know, behind or on the side of the house. So you minimize any flooding or potential runoff from the whole front of the house toward that wetland area. So such a very good thing, behind the house and on the side, that's useful. I think that would minimize the potential disturbance or issues in putting, you know, the seclusion fence and stuff. Those were the...
Planning board members, questions, comments?
The existing house, about when was it constructed?
It was added up to, yeah, there was an addition, and the second was added.
And what are these rectangles that are filling these?
Those are pasture paddocks.
Are they fenced?
Oh, these? Yeah, yeah, these are small fences and large bars. It's all the question.
Okay, and how many acres is the whole?
Eight foot four, I believe.
And you don't have any livestock or?
Nope.
Anyone else?
What was the barn needed?
It's garbage storage.
So it's not needed or air-conditioned in any way?
No, the barn was built, I believe, also previously, I think.
No water?
It's been used since.
No water at the barn?
There is water, but the water comes from the house to the barn.
You have the updated plans in the...
It is.
It should, it should be in the paddock, it should be a neurocontrol set plan.
Would you be able to, if willing, to bring everything around through the back of the property? The back of the house is supposed to go through the construction. Yeah, I believe that would be easier anyways because there are three large trees.
As far as they think, the only access is through that.
Through the driveway. I mean, there are three massive driveways, there are also three, two other access points over the creek there. Yeah, I was saying, can I come around the back of the house versus just through the street across the property? That's all. Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, Jim, I think you have a draft procedural resolution.
Draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration tonight for site plan and wetlands permit for Drake Miller for addition in hardscape in seventy-eight to ninety Salisbury Turnpike. And the RC five, except for the applications supporting documents is adequate for further review. Classifying actions type two under seeker, which according to environmental quality reviews are required. We will schedule a public hearing for October 7. We will send this to the C A B for review, we'll go to county planning for review, and we need two planning board members to do a second.
Good luck to them. I'll go with Sean. All right, we have draft procedural resolution, may I have a motion to accept it?
Certainly.
Motion and second, all those in favor? Join us, abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much, we'll be in touch to schedule a time if it becomes a problem.
Okay.
One or the other of you, who should be scheduled?
My doc, either one of them.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second new application this evening is out of Barry Entner. Forty-one Violet Hill Road, site plan and special use permit, and a stone wall and patio. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's start with the plan before this one.
In advance, point. Center of vote.
Good evening, my name is Lauren Claus. I'm here, I'm a project manager and architect for The Art of Building, and I'm here this evening on behalf of my client Barry Entner of forty-one Violet Hill Road in Reinbeck. Just a situation, leaving Reinbeck, Violet Hill is hangar right on Violet Hill Road, and then there's, you go around a sort of a bend, and the property is over on the left. It's an eighteen-acre property with several structures on it. This is part of the renovation of the main house. And so just to walk you through the site plan. This presentation is for, application for a special use permit to build a low stone wall. So the house, the property, the eighteen-acre property is here. Violet Hill Road comes along here. This is the main house, which is being renovated under a permit that was approved in January of this year. This lower area here is a patio with two low stone walls, some L-shaped. As you can see in the topography, the land slopes down away from the house. And so the stone wall functions as a retaining wall and as a bench in this area. Can we go to the next? So as I mentioned, the building permit was, pad was approved in January of this year. You can see the, here we are. The stone walls portions are here and here. This area and this area are eighteen inches above the patio grade. This area is a counter height. As I mentioned, the property, the land slopes away, so this is actually all fill. You can see up in this section, up on the upper left, the dotted line shows the original grade, and we ended up adding some fill into this area in order to build the patio. We could go back, so just one to the previous site plan, thank you. So the distance from the road is about 160 feet here, this is back to the property line, it's over 100 feet. And this area is covered by a dense growth of trees. So if we go forward again, thanks. So the stone wall has a little bit of exterior lighting incorporated into it. So there are some step lighting in these locations, all which point down. We have some cut sheets of the lighting in subsequent slides. There are also a few followers lights pointing down in order to light the patio. If you go forward. So this area view demonstrates the screen from the road. So again, Violet Hill Road, the house, the proposed location of the stone walls and the heavily wooded screen between this area and Violet Hill Road. This slide demonstrates our proposed materials. The stone wall itself is the field stone in the top image. The steps going down to the left to the grid below, and the seat would be this natural cleft bluestone. And then you're also in the pathway between the parking area and the patio, so the natural cleft bluestone. And then finally, Belgium block is another accent in the whole palette. This is all part of a cohesive master plan for the whole property that's using a historically appropriate and consistent palette through all of the structures. If you go to the next one. So this is the, this is the light, the downlight that is in, that would be in the stone wall. It would be positioned about a foot to eighteen inches above, about a foot above the patio level itself. And if you go to the next. This is the proposed follower, again, low sort of knee height and oriented downward.
That's the application.
So I didn't really see any planning issues with the proposal. Again, we'll need a special use permit, a fence permit, because if it's retained, it will fall under the fence criteria. I think the review is primarily one of historic preservation consistency within the property character. Typically wouldn't discuss this potential phase one, A, one, B, but the area's already been disturbed, I understand, so that's probably the thing. Discussing, it's already been disturbed. So related, how is the distance away from the road means you're not going to see the lights, and maybe at least off, you can see something. And Jim, I can see it, something like maybe in the hall.
Planning board members, questions, comments?
Is this wall going to be a traditional dry stone wall built up the grade, or does it rest on any kind of a pier or footing that has to be excavated?
As I mentioned, because the land slopes down away from the house, there was very minimal excavation when I initially... So you can see here, section, this is the original grade, so there was a little bit that needed to be dug out here, but the rest of it was filled. So there is a concrete pad that is at the base of the stone wall.
Is this already constructed?
The retaining wall is. The wall, so we were given permission by Ryan Tam in May in order to continue the construction of the patio, to keep construction minimal. We were given permission to build the wall up to the level of the patio function as occurred.
So this is an application just for building a wall?
Correct.
And is it going to be a mortar wall, or is it going to be held together but rapidly in friction?
We hold the, we hold the mortar back, so it doesn't look like...
But you use mortar in the wall?
We do.
And is given the assurance that you're going to maintain, that the applicant is going to maintain that vegetative screen?
Of course, absolutely, and in fact, they're building it up for their... They began that process, they've been doing it over a course of years, and it's in their interest to have a greater, a greater screen.
It needs a special use permit and fence permit for the wall itself.
It was, we did discuss the fact that we would have had for a technology, particularly that trenching area, had we known about it in the beginning. Ryan was unaware of this, so it took a while to authorize him to build that. That's why this, that was, this was...
Following up on a, sorry, I wanted to... Following up on this, I followed up with our excavator and previous site plans, we did quite a bit of infrastructural work, and this was approved as part of site plan in order to construct the cool house. And so this area was disturbed within the last two years and was approved underneath, under a separate site plan application. So this, everything that you've disturbed here has, was disturbed under an approved site plan within the last two years. That was something that I had referred in the initial presentation.
The art of building sign is on Violet Hill, first make that current.
Yes, yes.
Is that a permanent fixture?
The sign? It's going to be coming down soon. Going to finish this.
Any other, any other questions, comments? Jim, you have draft procedural resolution.
Draft procedural resolution for the board's consideration tonight for Barry Entner for construction of the stone wall and forty-one Violet Hill Road for the RC five, except for the applications supporting back in the setup for the review. Classifying the actions type two under seeker, we'll schedule the public hearing for October 7. We will send this to the C A B for review, we will send it to H A P A C and county planning as a site plan, we need two planning board members to do a second.
I'll go.
I'm Tom. We have a draft procedural resolution, may I have a motion to accept it, please? Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, abstention, the motion carries. That completes the new application portion of this evening's meeting. We'll now move to the public hearing section of the meeting. The first public hearing for this evening is Adam Pinkton, Eleven Duchess Terrace Site Plan and Special Use Permit for the repair of a foundation and the replacement of windows.
Hi, my name is... Hi, my name is Cassandra, I'm an associate attorney at Burton House in Shawan, Colorado. I am chaired by Claire Walder, a partner at Burton House in Shawan, Colorado, and a general attorney, the general contractor. I'm here tonight on behalf of Adam Pinkton and Angela Capadorella, the owners of Eleven Duchess Terrace. We're here tonight seeking special permit and site plan removal to install a new foundation on the eastern side of the building, portions of the northern and southern side of the building. The new foundation is needed to stabilize the structure, which lies at the foundation, and is sagging and has significant water curation, mold, and has been infiltrated with pests. The project will enable the applicants to preserve this historical for future generations. The new foundation will be a concrete block, and will be going in as soon as the site. An existing late stone foundation under the remaining portion of the structure will be repaired as new, so they're trying to extend as much of the original structure as they can. The project also includes replacement of three nonoriginal windows on western, on the street facing side of the dwelling, and installation of two new propane tanks and a condenser unit. Lastly, a new drywall will be installed to handle drainage from the footing drains on site, and a piece of asphalt encumbered with blue stone with gravel. And then to prevent any interference with the neighbors, since this is a small block, a steel fence would be installed along the southern boundary of the site to ensure no recollection on the seventeen Duchess Terrace side. And any work must be done between the house and that southern boundary will be completed by hand digging. At the last meeting, it was requested by the board that it was clearly outlined where the hand-digging portion will be. When you scroll down to sheet C02, you will see that that is the drawing for the hand digging, and it's in color, but it was the red, that top portion is...
Basically red here, this area becomes. So again, I'm Joseph, I'm the contractor, and the area here, which goes down, so this area, this kind of shows the property line here. So right from here, this is what the steel fence would be doing. The repair of the existing foundation that basically is kind of just sitting more or less on the ground, on some stones, there's not a proper foundation under it. It goes, you know, probably 12 feet by the length of about 24 feet in the back here. So this area that we have, we're going to access it from the backside to dig, to excavate this area to build, put in, put in the foundation, the proper building. Around the side here, this is just, we're just looking at the sill plate to make sure, because we can see some areas of rotting, it's in poor condition, I don't know which one we care of anything, that may be damaged in these areas right here. So that's kind of the extent of the outside, again, the whole purpose of this is, the place is, you know, the foundation really is falling apart. The whole back part is probably sagged, about three or four inches, as a core repair, as this was mentioned earlier. The purpose of this is just to maintain the integrity of the house, save it long enough. Any questions?
No, I think, you know, previously I had mentioned just the concern about reducing property owner, it's primarily historic preservation discussion, and so they understand that to repair houses is, you know, that needs to be done. The only thing I noticed is the plan needed to be staffed the site in order to be able to, but you don't see a signature of an architect or engineer stamp on it.
So yeah, these are just the online versions, but you have the hard copies that are...
Hard copy stamps.
Who went to the site visit?
I stood Sean up, and I'm sorry, I was, I handed down for Thursday, and I didn't make it, but Sean shared some photos, so it... So on inspection, move into the basement, I think I'll just start there. What you're seeing on the back of the house, it is sitting basically on grade with a lot of soil, actually, even in the basement, it's rather weird, you walk down to the basement, and there's a pile of soil. And that's what all the trusses are sitting on, and then what happens there is there's wall, right? So it's pretty significant in the back of the house. On the side of the house, there's some pictures also where the propane tanks were existing, and they replaced it, just remained the propane tanks and keeping them as is. There's also a large bush that would be hiding in the front of the house, that will continue to hide the air conditioning unit that's going to be put in. But the, the other days on the side of the house where there's a lot of concern, I think in this first meeting, was they're going to be handing forty-eight inches, checking out the sill plate. And you can see in the basement areas that the sill plate was rotted, but it's not. But you can also see this significant deterioration of the foundation on the rear side of the house, or lack of foundation and rotting. So that's just a picture, you can literally see down through.
That goes right into the basement.
Yeah, yes, I passed it off for a mole. But this is the area where that bush is, and they are planning to remove it, put it back in, we talked about landscaping as part of this project. That will hide the air conditioning condenser, I guess, next. And that's exactly where the air conditioning unit will go. This is the side of the house where you can see kind of those blue stones that they'd be handing, that entire area, of it just checking the sill plate, which is about 48 inches below grade. And that's also where the propane, propane tanks are existing, but we'll go back in, remove them. And in the back of the house, there's a significant amount of room, as you can see, to put a machine back there and dig that area out. And then we'd access it to the front, so, right? Other than that, I mean, that was my take of the site, because I don't, it was needed, it was needed. I guess this is all what I'm saying.
Did you see any reason for the concern about the neighboring property giving this work?
With the access from the rear, then I would say no, I think prior to being on site, yes. Because there's concern machinery on the side, there's definitely no room for that. With the reality of hand digging and the access that they would be able to have from the back now, for housing.
Yes, and I apologize for not having that in here. The questions that I would have asked was, first of all, the width of the trench that you have to make in order to adequately access the footing? You're going to have to put it in place under the cross line. Is there going to be a problem with setbacks, or are you going to do shoring or something like that to hold back the neighbors?
We have about three and a half feet to the side, so, and that should be fine for us to get.
us to get, because again, we're gonna access, like, we have this here. So we're going to access this area directly outside from the machinery. And so, you know, we're not seeing any issue with, you know, getting in there, being able to work out. So it's from the house, the side.
The other thing is, would want to add something that you need adequate provision for getting rid of the water that comes from the roof. There's a, seem to be a lot of hardscaped around there. And that, you know, is that kind of thing that's been exacerbating the problem?
Yeah, I mean, right now, right now, you can see on the backside, what is here, you don't, there's not going to be any issue per se here, other than the fact that there's nothing, other than a big hole in the ground for the water. So, but as part of this is the drywall to take care of, and the footing drains as well as, you know, topical.
Your leaders will go and get that.
Yes, yeah.
Perfect. And then the other thing would be the three replacement windows. And it.
So the plan is to basically make them just like the windows on the rest of the house. The only window that's going to change is size. This is a very, is their current, it's a little bit larger. It's a bathroom.
And, and what's the nature of the windows that you're gonna be putting in? Are they?
Yeah, so they're windows.
Yeah, they're gonna match basically exactly the same, the same windows that are in the rest of the passage. The windows changed.
Yeah, Craig, the previous or someone, two of those were eight years ago. So they have all the windows, except for those three. Those three are just immediately replaced.
The planning board members, questions? Comments? And there's the problem. Is there anyone here who'd like to comment? If so, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and let us know what you're thinking.
It's not so much a comment, sorry, I'm fogged in this. It's not so much a comment as a question. I believe the current sump pump discharge is out in the front of the house. And I'm wondering whether that situation is going to change. There's only, there'll be now more water coming out of the basement, I see. And so I'm worried about water, which is generally a problem. So will the existing sump pump continue to use the discharge in the same way?
Do you want us to answer now?
I think you should.
So the plan is, if you go back to. Wait, I mean, this is actually, so the plan is to put the drywall in, and the purpose of the drywall is to dig down so that any of the water, the footing left, can be drained off and again, but, you know, go into that, into that area. So that's, that is the plan, put the drywall to handle that. Because right now, it doesn't seem like there's any where the water can happen.
So are you gonna eliminate the sump pump? Or is it gonna be there as a backup and then discharge into the dry.
Yep, exactly. Yep, and the drywall.
Okay, I have a question.
Andrew, is that your question?
So sorry, I beg your pardon. My name is Jennifer. My name is Jennifer. One of my concerns was about the gas tank in the case. You said they were on that side. They're on the side of our side of the town. They're not to our knowledge.
Oh, oh, gas tank.
Our gas tank is, but not ours. Maybe we misheard.
Yes, please.
So there's, there's a gas line that runs up here that it was like at one point. So there were tanks that were in this position, and then of course you have the tank here. Regardless, the proposal of the tanks are to put two tanks that are right here, for also proposing a generator in this corner, this location right here.
Is that a question? That concerns me very much. And the property next door is, as you all know, went down and caused a lot of problems for us. And that obviously, we have our gas tanks there, it's somewhat over risk. I don't know if the residential is or whatever. I just, we just worry this, we just worry this. And I also, with any of the water that was discharged, normally in the front is discharged towards a property in the back, what is this? Because we already have, you know, a sump pump that's working overtime. And that water goes into our basement, that is a problem. So we're worried about that. And I, I don't know if we've done any, I don't know what we're doing, water drainage, or someone to ensure that that isn't a threat to our systems. But I wish we had. That's one thing. I am concerned about the narrowness of the back. We intend to put their things there because that is a means of access from the back balcony, which at the moment is a means of progress from the house. There's a problem. And putting their tanks there, our tanks already there, it might, might be a problem if people get out in case of fire. We already have a problem on the other side of the house with a dangerous part, which particularly in the winter will be dangerous, which was caused by the land collapsing on the other side. So I know you know the concern about land collapsing. My other concern is, are they going to shorten this work? Or are they doing it as if he executed what he do? And as I asked the contractor on the other side to do before he did the excavating of the foundation, I was informed, as I have been informed again, that the only requirement by my mind is a plastic, lacy fence between the two properties, which sadly proved inadequate, because although the workers do not stand with it, it doesn't protect the stock of projectile from flying over it and hitting our house. So it is a real problem for us. And I asked Adam, we are very, very apprehended. We know it is true. But given our experience, which has been awful, in that we tried to be as handy and as tough as possible, we feel we have to do something to protect ourselves. I called our insurance company and said, what would happen if the land is subsided? And I'm very, very familiar with problems of land subsidence coming from India, a very rainy country. So, and it happens a lot. And they said basically, well, the land is not insured, and you have, you have so much anyway, I advise you to return it. Now, we haven't had time to get, and I really don't want to go there. I just, it's, you know, this is a historic village. But it's not just the houses, it's the people. The people next to us, their family have lived there for 300 years. We don't want to subside any problems with our neighbors. I've actually done a little research since we got back from a very needed vacation, and heard that your village is historic preservation. What I'd like to ask you, what are we going to do to historically preserve ours?
Not, I'm not sure.
Well, I believe being told that the only rule that we have to do, we have to do is to put out the fence. That's, that's trying to execute. And it's not even really a fence, it's a plastic sheet. And first of all, the first storm, it will disperse, as happened next door. We kept on putting it back. And I think your inspector came around and said, it's not right, and we probably got a fine or something like that. So we kept on knowing and putting it back. But if it rains or, you know, it's a bad storm, it'll disappear anywhere. So whether or not we give permission to Adam to go on our property is relevant. Because it's so narrow the space that two inches reasonably difference, we are still at risk of having what happened on the other side. So we have asked Adam several things, and, which is the choice. So I, my request is that we get some kind of insurance protocol writing that he will fix anything that is caused, damaged, is caused by this, this project in that, that happened, hadn't happened. I don't think so. I'm sure you will, because this is our first chance to see this. I would like to go through the, the project on our side with the, with the construction, when , when you're possible, going to show us how we, how we intend to take the house.
Well, I, I, I would, let me just say that I think that's the discussion we're having here this evening. And I will turn it back to the team that's here for Mr. Higginson to try and address those questions. We, well, we will be discussing after all the information presented, whether we feel we're at a point tonight to be able to approve the application.
May I, may I just make another question? And that is for a meeting with the mayor. This is not for us, because I don't think this will happen. But I think something about this process has to be amended in the future. So much onus is put on us. We are not even people asking for a permit. But it's still the onus is of honest change to the repairs if anything happens. So I, I don't know. I think the process is flawed. And it's definitely one that makes it very expensive. And for the locals, I think I read in the paper about this, they feel very much that they too much of the money for this.
Well, you'd be asking to meet with the supervisor?
Yes.
Since Rhine Cliff is in the town, and I'm sure she'd be happy to set up a time to sit with you and hear your concerns.
No, I want the process to change. Thank you so much.
Okay. I'll turn it to you to try to answer only the questions that were raised.
Certainly. So let's start with kind of the, again, looking at the excavation work. So from this point, again, around the front, this is just the sill plate that we're looking at. So the depth that we're going to be digging down, this will be hand digging. I said 18 inches at most, it could be six inches. So it's very, very shallow digging in this area. And so the destruction, the disturbance is going to be very minor. The main portion is going to be back here, and this is where we need to get the frost protection. So we're looking to go down four feet. Essentially, the bottom of the house is activated. So really, we're gonna be going down four feet from the bottom of the house. And depending upon the foundation depth over here, we will ask to find out the depth. Because the only way we could undermine the foundation and cause structural issues would be for us to be at a significantly lower depth than the neighbor's property, such that there could cause a cave, which the general will find some out for to be handled. So all I'm saying is that since we're only going down four feet, the likelihood of any impact, even to the property line is going to be here. And so, and again, this is not fortunate in the, in the sense that this is not a, a large project or something that will drag on for, for months and months, or even weeks. You know, the plan literally is to dig this out, which will take a couple of days, inform the footings, get an inspection, and for the footings to do it, my guess is this timeframe, you know, would be two weeks, maybe three at most before the excavation and the rebuild is done. Again, so this, we're looking at just, you know, the area kind of in question would be this area right along the property line. And again, you know, since we're, you know, chopping roughly this high, so four feet is a, is a reference. There's nothing here that we're seeing that, that's causing us to be, you know, more, or to consider that. Certainly it's a concern to be, you know, we don't want to cause any issues or damage to anyone's property. And that's of the utmost concern. And we'll make sure that they're very conscious and careful with the work that's being done. And so maybe I'll just pause there to see if there's any questions about the excavation.
Well, I'm assuming you carry insurance?
Yes.
Right? So if there's something that happens during.
Yes.
The work.
Definitely, yes.
What is the amount that we have?
Five million dollars.
And what is the nature of the soil?
Is it skin there right now? So it's kind of, I would say a clay-oney type material that's in there. Underneath it's fairly hardened, because it's very dry, but fairly.
Right, would you have something?
Yeah, just, as Sean said, very insurance of their prospect, for you to, with the neighbor that's also matured. And certainly, I would say that this is.
So we have heard the request, Victoria Polidore, about adding the issue to get insurance. At this point, we don't feel that that's inappropriate, a question for the planning board. Nor is it appropriate to add the labor at this time. If there were damage, and you were able to show that the cause of any damage was this project, then of course they would have, you know, the right to see a competence through the normal channels. That's something the planning board do. We're going to love it.
Yeah, well, under ordinary circumstances, we have side yard setbacks and that sort of thing, which really obviate this type of problem. But because of Rhine Cliff's unique geometry, you have houses that are built, you know, one up next to the other. And it doesn't really take much of a stretch of the imagination to concede that, that, you know, something could happen. And, you know, if, if it were me, I would be very careful to document existing conditions of the neighbor's property as well as the property that I'm working on. In that, that's, like, this settled in my house is on a square. You know, being able to demonstrate that that was a pre-existing condition would be a requirement.
I would add to what you just said.
I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
I, I would add to what Craig just said, in that all it would take is another one of those humongous rainstorms that we've been having. You know, and they come in and you get several inches in an hour. So what you're saying is, if anything were to happen, if the worst happened and they had that rainstorm, and the neighbor's property was damaged, they could then sue you. That's what you're basically saying, right? Because they would not be named as an also insurer.
Correct. I mean, as with any rainstorm or active god, or anything that happens, they would, they would have their own matter of certain recognition. But this, this project is very minor and has been thought out so that there, there's very limited opportunity to harm the neighbor. I mean, hand diggings, putting up a fence, and inadvertently trespasses. The purpose of the sill fence wasn't to prevent the landslide, it was really to prevent the trespassers from going across the property. You're not getting the landslide from hand digging. And then in that, if you addressed your methods, and, you know, we don't see a cost for it.
You know, it just might be pretty well, that you could have pumped the generator on the site, just in case of a heavy rain. So you're prepared to pump the accessible on the.
The question is, where would we pump the sex rights?
That far, you could just.
It's, this is the street right there.
Okay.
It seems like there's no place to put anything, which is where the whole.
Like I said, it was just pretty well thought.
Yeah, listen, we're, we're, that's not a problem to have.
It's not very short like that. Again, the main excavation's on the rear. There's, how, is that 6 to 8 feet on the side of the house?
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's not like a significant portion. At that point, there is a large area, and we're, we're also, we're dealing $5 million in insurance. Like, it's, we're not, we're not, we're also like, it needs to get done. So I think, I think the reality is that, like, they're protected. Like, everyone's protected in this situation.
But is that $5 million covered there?
Yeah. Yeah. The house isn't five million itself, so.
No, no, no.
If they need a claim against. If they need a claim against the contractor.
Okay, so it's not strictly on the cost.
Oh, it is for the cost. But if the project caused an issue, they could make a claim against the contractor with insurance.
I think we'd have.
It'd have to take a serious.
Yeah.
What is the problem? Is there a problem with naming the neighbor as an also insured? Is that?
I mean, sometimes.
I can't.
I can make this. We have present tonight Christian Moore, who's representing the CPL. And if we have concerns that we really want to get another opinion on, we can certainly refer this to Christian and ask for CPLs. If that, that certainly takes it the next afternoon. It provides another layout, perhaps, if you need as well. I think that's true. It may be a redundancy, but I think in this situation, given all of the factors, it probably would be wise enough.
Do you know what I'm explaining what that is?
What it means is, CPL is the engineering firm you just consulted for. In cases like this, we ask them to review the engineering aspects of this application and to confirm what you are saying. Or to let us know if they see an issue that hasn't been discussed. So I'm putting that out there for my colleagues for their comment and consideration at this time.
I mean, I will just say that it's your, obviously, it's your decision, but it does add another montre fillet and it adds additional engineering costs, which it does make better service, put towards the project from our perspective.
Of course, yeah, of course, that's what we're here to discuss and want.
Oh, could I hear the answer to the question that I asked about what is the issue with naming?
Oh, okay. So with my insurance company, what they say is I need to have a contract with someone. And then with that contract, they're listed as additional insurance. So I can't just go out and name additional people as additional insurance. So either it needs to be someone that I have a contractual relationship with or like a town builder.
So is this a contract with the neighbor for which they would pay one dollar or something like that?
I think.
To me, it seems that, you know, all of our options are already in place. Actually, something that I have a consultant attorney now.
Yeah, and it's just beyond the scope of playing working at this point. Also, throughout the whole town, people are maybe touching on their homes every day. And if there's no site plan would be required, but not having said.
Let me ask.
Maybe an extra admission.
Let me, if we were to conclude to refer, is there something, Christian, you think you could turn around so that we could address this in two weeks if you move the meeting up?
If it's provided, the plan is accurate. So if I have any insurance.
We can do that and attempt to move along. And so I'm just putting three facts out there and I hope I want to. What would you like?
That's a good idea.
That makes sense to me. Yeah, and I, yeah. Again, I have to apologize for not having full eyes on it. But I understand it is a very short distance and with hand digging, having done it before, you're not going to dig that hole any deeper than it absolutely has to be. But I think there is a little bit more room for the thickness of the footing itself and the gravel. We're going to have to go with it. Get out a little bit more than this, any inches?
Yeah.
But we just need to be there for you.
So the client is saying we take that forty inches. Is the space in the basement as long or is it frost protection? Okay.
All right. Then what I'm looking for is a motion, continue the public hearing until the September sixteenth.
Just before we do that, can we just see if there's anyone else who wants to speak? So can we dress off and start?
Okay, anyone else for the public here? Okay.
I think you probably need to admit that I am concerned about the basin of the tanks. Yes.
Okay, just to remind everybody, this meeting is being videotaped and recorded. So everything that's being said, which is why we frequently make sure that you speak into the microphone so that we don't miss anything. So if we just talk about it there, then that gentleman there has it.
Thank you.
So back to anything else, planning board members?
Well, I'm wondering, since a big concern has been stated about the location of the gas tanks, is there another location for the gas tanks that is possible?
So with the gas tanks, they need to be essentially a way for them to access to that.
Well, if we do what we say we're going to do or suggest we're going to do and we continue it until September sixteenth, you also, in collaboration with Christian, can we look at the location of all those things and confirm their final alternatives?
Well, I mean, also, even if there was an incentive, I would say it's inappropriate stuff. It's been very interesting.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying you'll have the option to look at everything.
Well, it invites a question of where their, where is their purpose? A fireplace on that side that may have been placed without that assurance on their side. So we're not going to be able to state just because they're there.
Okay, anything else?
If there is, I should say, if there is an address issue, I mean, if they take, instead of just a couple of feet or such, you're not wanting to, you're only between two.
I'm unclear about who, about you guys.
I think it was just a general, you know, getting off. It's funny, I believe there's a couple, but just something else.
Well, that will all be like that. I'm going to run through the whole application. Okay?
So do you need us to set up your escrow for Christian? If you, we do want to make sure it's not.
Call with Gretchen tomorrow, confirm with her what she needs. I can get that motion, please, someone?
Motion?
Motion to, it's September sixteenth? Second? All was agreed?
Aye.
All was extension? Speak with Gretchen tomorrow. She'll confirm with you all the steps that need to take place. Christian has confirmed that we can turn this right around. So we'll be scheduling in two weeks.
Oh, great. Thank you.
No, 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 that's one, two weeks to the sixteenth.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. The next public hearing will be sitting Alexander Wright twenty-three Hughes Road. Pardon? No, I have Alexander Wright. Oh, I'm looking at. On the official document, the last copy, I think, about twenty-three Hughes Road. Site plan, special use in advanced credit, treaty label on light brush. Did you?
Hi, do you know?
Of business as to where we are?
Yes, we do. I just wanted to mention that my name is Micah Bonister and I am the wife of Alexander Wright and for the first twenty-three Hughes Road in Rindberg. I'm going to ask Nicholas Bandmas, who is a senior civil engineer. We've been working with from almost from the start. We've been working with Lobella this party, October seventh, twenty twenty-three. At the window, there was a huge rainstorm and some things came to light. But we'll refresh your memory on where we are with that. And then, of course, we also have an update, a planting plan that is part of a voluntary remediation of the wetland. A small portion, point zero eight acres, that we never fully cleared the brush out of. So we have a planting plan. We are actually eager to hear if Exxonia has responded to the request.
We have the information.
Okay, that's, that's important, but that is outstanding then. But Nicholas is going to get us up to speed. And the reason we're giving you the printouts in addition to the planting plan, he'll explain this in a minute, but we didn't have the planting plan and the original slide that guy sent to the board. And there's another slide we have inside ten, which is a conversation I had with Brian Skolrick from Dutchess County Soil and Water to address the issues around flooding in our area, just to get his perspective. And that was, that was a suggestion by Brian Tam and very helpful suggestion to speak to Brian Skolrick. But I'm going to hand it out to Nick, who's going to share a little bit about his, where we're at and where the remediation is coming into.
Thank you, Micah. My name is with Lobella Associates Engineering Company. So just to, just to make sure that you're aware here, the slides that I just handed you, that is what the applicant provided earlier. It's just ordered a little differently and a little more succinct for what we're going to be discussing here this evening. Just wanted to make sure that you all had it in front of you. And the latest plan is as was provided to you previously. Just wanted to make sure that we had that company's project for discussion tonight. So just wanted to start with a quick recap of what we're looking for. We have, the applicants has made some site improvements on their, on their property. They cleared brush and three trees to make a bit of yard space in their, in their yard on their property, you said. And the tree clearing was to accommodate installation of solar panels on the roof of their home. This work has already been completed and what we're seeking is a permit or retroactive approval of these improvements.
May I just clarify that the solar panels have not been installed because we can't.
Thank you.
Move forward with that until, so that what has been done is the removal of the trees that was done in October, actually, last year.
So just to restate this microphone, the, now that we just correctly, solar panels have not been installed. The only work that has been completed has been the landscaping improvements at Exxonia's house. We, we, at Lobella, provided the applicants with a couple of services. We provided a wetland delineation of the site after the concerns of the town actually delight. There are federal wetlands located on the, on the property as well as federally regulated tree. Some of the brush removal was within a federally regulated wetland. And most of the brush removal was within one hundred feet of a federal wetland, which is a permit, an actually required permit from the town. So we were here before you in May. And we discussed not only what we were seeking for the application, but then two board members did just make a site visit and provided some concerns relating to erosion along the stream bank and the potential for flooding caused by the actions of the applicant. And so what we're going to discuss tonight is the, like I said, the voluntary remediation, whatever about the area, as well as reputation of the flooding concerns related to the key action that's been the cause for the, for the flood. So at the direction of the planning board, we did prepare a landscaping plan. Let's, this is a point here. Thank you. So to address concern about erosion along the stream, we have discussed in the field plantings of woody vegetation to replace any of the woody shrubbery that had been removed. And so we had one of our, of course, the landscaping partners at Lobella that looked at and provides some recommendations for what we can solve along the stream bank itself. And if you scroll to the page to the right of the page here, you can see images of the species that we intend to provide here. Just for context, but we were told that Exxonia would be potentially looking at this. It was confirmed tonight that they haven't had a chance to look at this yet. I don't know if you're expecting that at this point, but we do think what we have here does address the board's concern. So if there's no further comment, we would like to put that concern to rest. And moving along to the potential for flooding, there was some discussion at the last meeting about the fill that was placed on site. The applicant did provide some topsoil in regards to help improve the grass. But as well as a financial balance, it was considered to amount of area that actually contributes to drainage to this, to the stream. It was fifty-seven yards over an area of roughly one hundred sixty acres, plus or minus. So this is like.
One hundred sixty acres?
Not their site, but the, so there's the stream coming through the applicant's property. And this, this charges underneath the goose grove. There's a culvert here. And when we looked at the amount of area that actually contributes drainage to the culvert, it comes way here off of that and it comes in neighboring lands. And it's, it was roughly one hundred sixty acres, one hundred.
So our property, the one that is covered with the topsoil, I'm guessing is half an acre or something. Just to clarify, we don't, we only have two point four acres total. You can see the small portion that we created, of which point zero eight was sort of like efficient.
The applicant also provided you with images of the stream. So you can see it is very, it's a very small cross section, which means it would be fairly prone to flooding. There's a lot of area, a lot of space for water that should travel through. You can also see in the, in the information provided, the photo of the yard after the flooding from October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. You can see that the, there's some flooding presence basically right where our runs actually solidified that's allowed itself. What we will also notice is that there was, there's a real evidence of erosion. The artist flagged basically that any runoff from this little river wasn't really contributing really through the yard. And then we go on further to show that the art history is fully established. And the presence of this vegetation would therefore prohibit any end of erosion that is coming from here after. And now I will turn this over to Mike, to Professor, discussing Dutchess County Soil and Water.
So after the. Thank you. Thank you. Forgot to mic up. I'm a professor and I never use microphones. Sorry about that. I wanted to, so after these, for those on slide two, which is this one here, I just wanted to recap a few points from this conversation that I had with Brian Skolrick from Dutchess County Water Conservation. And that was a really illuminating conversation because Brian Tam, who had recommended I speak with him, had already spoken to him about the situation in the general vicinity of our property, which there are five properties. I have on Hughes Road and then there's a small road Hickory Lane. And the whole area, with the exception of, actually, our neighbors at twenty-four Hughes to the civil higher, we all experienced flooding. The stream, very small stream, but one that's dry. we all experienced flooding. The stream is a very small stream, but one that's dry more than half the year. But when it does accept, take water from large rainfalls, it affects all of us. We have periodic flooding. I know our neighbors, the Clenchies, who were here last few meetings ago, they experienced terrible flooding. It is a real problem. So I was very grateful to have the opportunity to speak to somebody who knows the area really well. Before I mention what he told me, I also wanted to share that he is very willing and does this as part of his job to do a full evaluation. What he had done previously, he came out, I didn't know that actually. He spoke with Brian, he spoke with a few other neighbors. And it was what he calls an informal assessment. He gave some ideas. He definitely, very specifically said he did not think our yard work contributed to this problem. And you're welcome to speak with him and say that to you. But until he does the full evaluation, which the town has to request because the neighbors are, he's not going to respond to neighbors. He doesn't want to get involved at that level. But the town could ask for a full assessment, which to me makes a lot of sense personally. I think that climate change is here. We're seeing huge rainfalls. We got kind of caught, you know, we had done the yard work, the topsoil work three days before the October 7th storm and a few months before the December 18th storm of last year. Those were enormous storms. And I actually, I won't go into it now, but we did provide the board with federally, federal data, like NOAA data on Rhinebeck in particular. Starting in July of last year, August, September. And again, this big storm happened on October 7th, just a few days after we put the topsoil down. So the reason I mention that is I'm sure you all are aware of the huge storms, but they are, you know, it did happen to really coincide with the work we did. So I do understand why the perception was that the work we did contributed to. But Brian Skolrick has assured us that from his perspective, it did not. And we also have Nicholas Lamas and Meredith Ellis from Lobella, who had come out within days of, or weeks of the October 7th. And voluntarily, again, Brian had suggested we do this, engaged with them to see if indeed we had caused this issue. We thought we put that to rest, but again, May 3rd came in public hearing and there was some concern still. So I do want to say that from the weather data, which I've provided for my conversation with Brian, from Nicholas, it really does not appear that we contributed. And to the extent that the remediation, which is a long past stream, may mitigate and maybe improve, you know, because it looks like we're replanting a lot more trees than there used to be. You know, that's great as far as I'm concerned. And I also think, I hope that this is an opportunity to collaborate, cooperate with our neighbors, to think ahead, right, to think about how are we going to handle these rainfalls in the future. So if this could be an opportunity to work together, I would welcome that. And I had indicated that to my neighbors. I don't know where things went south, but hopefully we can come back to that cooperative spirit because it's been all of our interests to do that. But for the purpose of, I think, our application, my sense is that we were applying for something to remediate an issue, get a retroactive permit for the clearing we did so we can move forward with the solar panels, which now is a year delayed. But, you know, we're also spending a lot of money, a lot of effort, and I'm trying to think, is this even worth it to the solar panels? But I do hope that we can make that change. We are committed to trying to do what we can for climate change and we feel that solar is part of that equation. So I think that's... Thank you very much. Jim?
No new comments. I think there's plenty of sun.
Tom, anything, any updates from you on this?
Well, we're prepared. But Sonia is lined up to review the planting plan. Eric was away and then he got sick. And so he's been out of the office a lot this summer. But my understanding was that the original submission didn't include the planting plan. Now that we do have it, we can send it along to Eric. And he will review the planting plan and provide comments to the board. There's a chance he may want to come down and visit your property and so someone may reach out to you about that. But...
Yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah, that part of it's ready to go. And, you know, it's a decision of the board, of course, but I would, if the Dutch County Soil and Water Department is willing to do a formal assessment, that seems like it would be a step that would make sense here. So I would encourage the board to ask for that to be done.
Yeah, I have one question. Can you show some photographs here? And I don't see any equipment to move that around. Is that all the soil that was brought? Is this picture of everything that was brought to the site? Because that doesn't look like 57 yards.
It's a lot of soil. I know it...
Is that everything, what's in the photograph?
That is everything. And Nicholas wasn't there. This happened in early October before we engaged with anybody.
Okay, and...
And also just, I'm sorry, Andrew, but we have, in the larger packet that we sent to the board, we have documentation, a lot of documentation, one from the landscaper saying exactly how much soil he put down.
Okay, and it wasn't spread over 160 acres?
No, that was a mistake.
Okay, it was isolated to just what was delineated on the map here? And that is part of, not the buffer though, but the wetland itself?
So in the map, you can see, I don't know if you want to show what part of it?
So the crosshatching there was the area that was where there's shrubbery removed. And I think my good news is that it was placed from soil.
Yes, exactly.
So there is some amount of soil within the west area itself.
To provide a little bit more scaled perspective, this house is a split level ranch, you know, manufactured home. It's not a huge home. So I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the dimensions, but this is possibly half an acre. I don't exactly know, but it's not 160, it's not even close. And you can see the yard in this picture.
I understand that that was a...
Yeah, that's understandable.
I have a better sense of what's going on.
Right, okay, yeah, sorry for that, giving a bit of information. But it's really just more about the area of drainage. I'm sorry, it's the drainage area, not the area that was approved on the rice property. The area that wasn't on the rice property yet is much, much smaller than that. And I did just want to touch on one little thing on the wetland. We had a board reached out to the Army Corps Engineers who had said that the right voluntary communication of restoring the wetland with vegetation is enough to satisfy any concerns that the Army Corps has.
This picture doesn't show a core of your grass. It's very green. What does it look like now?
Well, I was sitting on my back deck today and it's beautiful. I mean, it's really, it's perhaps maybe not that green after August. It wasn't that hot, but it is very beautiful.
It's very brown underfoot wet. I remember it, how sunny it was.
Yeah, it's near the, it's interesting because that area...
That is the wetland?
Is the area that is wet. And I have a photo of that, like right after the big storm. It is actually not wet right now because August, July are very dry, even though it has been wetter than typical. But for much of the spring and fall, it is wet. We also have a wall there that you can access. It is very dry right now, in fact, crackly dry.
And so some combination of trees and shrubs is quite for along the stream where all of the brush was taken out.
Yeah, not all the brush. And if Sonia comes out, they will see that along the stream, there's still a lot of brush. I think what you had requested in the last meeting was things that have deeper roots that was currently there. So that's, I think, why the added some additional. But it's not completely clear. There's a whole stretch where there's still trees and saplings. It's not 100% clear near that wetland area.
Right, well, along the stream, when we were there, all of the undergrowth, all of the brush had been taken out. So it was there up to the waterline, the stream, and that's what we're talking about mitigating.
Yeah, I think there's a picture now where you see a little bit of vegetation, but we're squabbling about small stuff. We're going to plant a lot of new stuff according to this plan. Someone else? Hopefully we'll get there.
Yeah, I have a question for Nicholas. Going back to your conversations with the Army Corps, is a permit of any kind required from them?
Not for this level of disturbance. This is well below their threshold for compulsory mitigation or requirement. Well, so I should say, it's below the level for compulsory mitigation, but the voluntary mitigation is enough to relax the need for... If we were to fill that mitigation, then yes, permit, but because there are probably some things that are dropped in.
Understood. And have they given you anything in writing about saying that they're satisfied with the landscape plan?
They have not seen the landscape plan. That was based on just earlier discussions to reclaim with the wetland scene eventually.
Do you plan on having further conversations with them about that or showing them the remediation plan?
We weren't planning on. We'd be happy to share with them.
If you could do that and if they're willing to just give you a letter just saying that they've seen it and they're satisfied with the plan, that would be good for the planning board to add to the record.
Absolutely. I will say, however, they have typically been providing emails only, so that...
An email would be fine.
Okay, excellent.
So good evening. Christina Clenchie, 33 Drive. We were here in May with our concerns for the change in the flooding during, what we call the drainage ditch. We have decided that our home is 25 years and we never experienced this type of flooding. We provided you with the pictures. At the last meeting, it was asked on a full analysis being made, the introduction to the planting, and that that be provided to us kind of to bring that to this meeting. So we have our engineer with us as well. We want to write a note of that information. We were considering to make that up. Maybe we have someone had that had been kind of disputing things that we had talked about at the meeting and said that we were making false claims. So I think the question still remains like, how much square footage is actually covered? And did it change the grade and the drainage pattern? In their packet, it says that there were 80 tons of dirt. And in researching that, 80 tons of dirt is actually just individual, it's four triaxle trucks of dirt. So into what you were saying, you got a picture that's in there. I'm not convinced that that was what was actually burnt there. And without knowing the actual square footage that was covered with the dirt, it's hard to determine if the grade was changed or, you know, how many inches of dirt were actually there. So that is still a concern. Thankfully, it's been very dry this summer, so we haven't had any additional flooding since late March. But following this project, we flooded October, November, December, March, and we, you know, provided you all the pictures. Also, the Artesian well that had come up between the Malera seems to be another source of water that is contributing to the additional water that's now flowing from Gary already to ours. And so we're just asking that some more time and research that goes with this, more information. And then also, the landscape, I will look at it. And again, it doesn't say how many square feet were covered. It just says the backyard, about one to two inches. And also said, they were saying that we made a false claim that they had exited. There was, there was small exiting equipment. I understand that they exited the property, but I cannot imagine that 80 tons of dirt was moved via a barrel in the shell. Like, how did they spread this if they used real equipment? So I feel the scope of work is being downplayed because this is a retroactive application and it definitely has impacted the stream in some way. And I wasn't able to print the pictures, but just to give you an idea of what the stream looks like now we are, ask the vegetation that is there today. And the yard next to us, which belongs to Brian Tam, they have a picture of his similar to that. We'll make comparison to the pictures that we provided, as you were saying, that we shared, right, on that whole one side of the street. So...
There was no analysis, Rob Clenchie, 33 Drive, Christine's husband. There was no analysis given to us, so our engineers on the Malera as well, like the board suggested before. Their engineers giving you his thoughts. He wasn't part of the project, which he stated the first time he came to this meet. He had no idea what was going on. So how could he make an accusation of what was there before to now that didn't contribute to anything? There's no one was on it. He was foolish. 80 tons of dirt's a lot of dirt. I'm construction. We all know what 80, and I've explained, people on the board know what 80 tons of dirt is. It's a lot of dirt. I put in this room, cover this whole room. It's a lot of dirt.
And then in reference to...
There was no, excuse me, there was no permits. They said they didn't know about excavating permits. There was no, that skid stairs back there. So it's not like we're not being neighbor. It's not like we're not, we're like blaming them, fully like shame on you, but we, come on, let's be a little realistic about it. Let's not downplay it. And we spoke to Dutch County, so we wanted to go on their property, wouldn't it? We got torn off their property with Brian and the guy from that company that was told not to come on their property. That was it. We voted to like to get them involved.
Initial contact with Dutch County Soil and Water I made in the October. Brian came out that we and Brian Tam, we were actually not on their property. We were on our property. We looked at her idea. The girl was a nurse. Her mom came and told us that we had no permission to be anywhere near their property, that we had created our own problem and were trying to go on their property. She accused me of being, you know, making things up or asking us to stick up to you.
Yes, we're going to work...
But what I wanted to say about Dutch County Soil and Water, Brian did cast questions. However, he did say that if we were to have this evaluation done and have them come into the project, that it would take several years for that to happen to their market in place. And we don't have several years to flood. We can't flood for several years waiting for resolution.
Yes, I understand. And I want to thank the board. I want to thank, you know, people that are involved that are doing the diligence. But let's not downplay the scenario of the situation. I showed you my house, my property. My, it happens again, my property is not going to be able to be, I'm not going to be able to live on my property. That's a major problem. Then forget about the board. It's going to go a different way because then people get to be, they start changing their tone. People start getting to be a poor. Because we're talking about my livelihood and where I live, where I raised my family for 25 years. It's not, it's not, it's not a downplay situation. It's serious. I have four feet of water in my home yard. I got almost an eighth. And then I've been there for about a promise of this 25 years. I would took care of it. I am on file for six, I have 100 permits on file that I went through the pain and ordered everything. I filed every permit I had to. If that was the case, I wouldn't file those permits. I would took care of the problem because I won't be able to live there. So I hope you're not downplaying the situation and let's face it along because this is serious. I'm not saying you are, and that's why I thank you for taking the diligence and looking into this matter. I would never accuse you of downplaying it. I just want to bring it to light how significant this problem is. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, remembering the site visit that Karen and I went on, we did see that all the brush along the stream had been removed. And on the opposite side of the stream, it was clear what had been there because it was brush, very thick brush, all along this stream. I do not believe that fill could have been added to the stream side there by sort of changing the nature of the stream because it would have been washed away in a flood. There was no evidence of fill up to the stream. Instead, there was this kind of barren area all along. Do you agree?
I think it's hard to say what might have transpired months before.
I think it's hard to say what might have transpired months before we were there. I do agree with you that it was evident that there were, you know, pretty thick brush on the other side of the stream. And there was no real foreseeable change in elevation from one side to the other. But I did recognize that there was some scouring where the water had had a cut half. And what might have happened to that downstream effects, it's hard to predict. But I think that the salient point here is the fact that some wetland was covered with soil. And that's the kind of thing that we're charged with preventing or ensuring that there's some sort of mitigation after the fact. And the downstream effects, like the neighboring house, the roadway with the culverts that go under it, and then the whole development of the gardens on the other side of the Rhine Cliff Road all played a role in this. And most of those places were laid out without the anticipation that we would be having these pronounced storms. So, you know, I would encourage the applicant to do the best they can to mitigate and undo whatever has been done. And I don't know how much value there is in trying to.
All right, so the report right now is we are expecting a report from Lonsonia. We have an offer on the table. We just got this one in the letter that John is recommending. We accept the offer and have time for it. I don't know about the details. We'll find out from them. If everyone agrees, how long that will take or what the implications of that are. I didn't hear it as something that this party pick years, but we'll ask and find out from them what they're going to provide us at this time. So with that being said, unless there's something else or anyone else from the public, we ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. And within that, a request to reach out to sort of. I have a motion and I have a second.
A second.
All those in favor, everybody?
Aye.
And we'll continue that until the October 7th meeting. Correct, Gretchen? All right, any others? Thank you, everyone. The next public hearing this evening is Mike's tree service. We're driving site management for the use of the front office, House and Medical Office. Mark, are you here?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that we submitted a plan that we're still awaiting approval from a letter, excuse me, from the Dutch County Department of Materials or Final Approval.
Did they give you any early hopes there in terms of time?
I'm hopeful this month with David Pearson retiring and I feel.
Oh, that could be good or bad.
So I'm hopeful that he comes through.
Oh, he needs to do the last thing on his desk. Got it, okay. I pity the people who have the bottoms of the planet, actually, Dave, please. All right, we have to October 7th?
Yes, please.
We have a request for a motion to continue the public hearing in Mike's tree service to October 7th. May I have a motion? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension. The last public hearing, Missy Lee Mark, I'll call you right back up. This is for Rockledge, 492 Acro hook road, site plan approval, special use permit and wetlands permit.
All of you, I'm ready.
Thank you, everyone. How's my lift off? Okay, all right.
So nothing else to add in regards to Rockledge? You know, to answer any questions that the board may have? And moving to the process.
Okay. So I'll turn it on at this point to Jim and John. And what was happening behind me? Are you checking with them?
Yes. You want to take that first?
All right, I will do that then. If there's anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on the Rockledge application.
Hi, Jeff, 15 Acro hook road. I wanted to provide some photographs for the record. And I also submitted them electronically today regarding the development. This area of Rhinebeck still has a fairly pristine ecosystem. And I think it's very important for the board to understand that this is a part of the town that probably has among the best, the most healthy ecosystem throughout the entire town. And I'd like to provide for the record photograph of. Of where Fallsburg, Fallsburg Creek crosses Acro hook road. And this is part of the complex, I'll hand this to you, committee, I'll put them. Part of the complex of the stream, distributary and the full stream, mainstream, the Fallsburg Creek, and the wetland matrix. And I'm not quite sure if this is actually downstream of the development. I think it is, but it's up to obviously professional experts to determine that. But if you study this picture and spend time in the area, you'll see that this is a very healthy stream corridor, very unusual for our town. Most of our streams, as I've observed over the past nine months of living here, tend to look more like this. This is the pond on Rhinebeck Kill where it crosses Mill Road. And when you look at this picture, you'll see it's very heavily impacted by algal bloom, which is probably the result of runoff from either agricultural production, fertilizer and newer application, or failing septic systems or other sources of natural treatment. And I provide these two photographs to illustrate, again, that this is a critical resource that needs a great deal of scrutiny. And Patty's going to talk more about that scrutiny in a moment. And just by basis of comparison, I include another photograph of a stream in the Catskills. This is Drybrook Creek, and this is an example of what a healthy ecosystem looks like. And we have all too few ecosystems like this in our town. So I offer these three photographs as exhibits to help you in your decision-making process. Thank you.
This is not on the property?
No, I think it is downstream or part of the complex that's ultimately downstream of the property.
Definitely downstream.
Definitely downstream.
Yeah, I think this is where you get onto Acro hook road.
In action.
The 300.
It's a intersection of Fly Road and Acro hook road, Fly Road, right? Yeah. Thank you.
I'm Michael Langto. I live at 220 Fly Road. I'm a professional farrier and a professional beekeeper. And I would like to thank the planning board for allowing us to discuss our concerns of this high-density project. I'd like to make a few comments. Interestingly, a family that lives about a quarter mile away from me recently went on a 10-month stay in Spain. They were gone for a while and I really wasn't thinking about them at all. They came home. The husband drives a blue sedan. The wife drives a gray SUV. The husband does martial arts in a village. And their son plays soccer and the daughter is into dance. I see the husband drive by my house two to three times a day. The wife drives by my house three to four times a day that I see. They could drive by even more than I'm observing. Soon their son will be driving as well. I find it hard that a traffic study can test things that aren't there. The traffic study said that previous to the project, that our traffic was good. And the project, after the project, our traffic will be acceptable. How many athletic families, how many socially active families will it take in this project to make our Acro hook road traffic unacceptable? We don't want to find out. Last month in Maryland, I went to one of the biggest bee conferences in the nation. Over 500 commercial beekeepers and sideliners were there, like myself. There were scientists and professors from all around the world speaking. I went to about five lectures a day. One of the scariest was called Beekeeping: A Changing World by Dr. Jeff Pettis. He talked about the change in weather, but also about pollution, pesticides, and habitat loss. All these things shorten the lifespan of our honeybees, but also our native pollinators as well, of which there are more than 4,000 in the United States. This development sends a scary precedent in our rural area. If one goes in, it makes it so much easier for another to happen again. Next, the population will be so dense that developers can see the need for a strip home. For these and other reasons, I believe the board should issue a positive declaration and require an environmental impact statement and scoping. Thank you very much.
I'm Patty Langto. I also live at 220 Fly Road with Michael. I have a procedural request. There are three documents that I would like to see included in the pilot documents that are out there for the public to see with respect to this application. That on May 31st, a lawyer representing a group of concerned neighbors, Jennifer Grossman, submitted a letter to the planning board. For reasons kind of out of everybody's control, it was never read aloud, so never put in the record. And I've searched the online documents and I don't see it. So I would like to request that it is put out there for the public to see. And also, there was a spreadsheet associated that listed all of the sections of the Seeker checklist and the reasons why it should be, it was supporting a positive declaration. So I would ask that that also be included out on the record of something submitted by the public that is of concern, that should be readily available to read. There was a study also done by a gentleman who did a lot of GIS mapping for us. And that is also, that was also submitted to the planning board, but is not available out on the website. So I would like that to also be available out there. I think it's a tough ask for people to have to come in out of their workday into the office to try to take a look at these documents when they wouldn't even know that they were submitted. So hopefully you think that's a reasonable request. Because the letter from Jennifer Grossman was not read into the record, I would like to just read a couple excerpts aloud. I won't read the whole thing. Five or six pages. Under the heading "Procedural compliance," to date, the analysis, reports and data completed by the developer have been piecemeal and segmented, modified numerous times over five or more years, and submitted at various times. This informal approach and review outside of the Seeker EIS process does not satisfy the mandates for a hard look, critical public scoping and procedural compliance. The EIS is a crucial document for impartial review and analysis of the full range of potential significant adverse environmental impacts of a proposed action and how those impacts can be avoided or minimized. Under the EIS process, the development of a single environmental record is developed and relied upon for your decision-making. In this instance, Seeker provides the board with authority to require the developer to fund an independent EIS, relying on professional consultants who will prepare review of the comprehensive scope of potential significant adverse impacts. Currently, the board and therefore the public lack such a document, and it must require that one be prepared and issue a positive declaration in order to comply with Seeker's hard look mandate. Under the title "Substantive and substantiated," contrary to Mystic Reminski's April 22nd, 2024 letter claiming the issues and concerns raised by community members and their consulting experts are based on speculation and conjecture and unsubstantiated, these concerns are instead factually clear and substantiated by scientific review and historic site-specific concerns. In fact, community members and their consultants have consistently raised critical questions that are clearly and reasonably related to the developer's plans as well as the widespread recognition that the site's wastewater treatment plant usage has notches effects along Fallsburg Creek on its path through Rhinebeck to the Hudson River. The odor concern alone related to the wastewater treatment plant is a foreseeable potential negative environmental impact because it already exists. There's a very low threshold that the planning board is held to. The regulatory language requires in the EIS where there may be a single potential significant impact. Given the location of the developer's property surrounded by species-rich wetlands and existing community character and development patterns, the potential impacts identified by experts, residents and individuals are both properly presented to the board and reasonably foreseeable. Given the specific conditions of the developer's project, including the flow rate downstream into federal and state wetlands and possible pollutants, additional secondary treatment standards may also apply. If the. The planning board must also comply with the New York State Historic Preservation Act of 1980, SHIPA, and Chapter 354 of New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation Law. I would like to point out that the letter that exists currently from SHIPA is very old and was actually obtained before many, many changes have happened to the development plans. So I think that it deserves revisiting. To date, the public has not had any opportunity to productively participate in scoping. And the board and its attorney dismissed requests for inclusion by the public at the February 5th, 2024, board here and on the record. The developer's proposal is exactly what Seeker envisioned as a project warranting an environmental impact statement. It is reasonable and it is necessary for the board to issue a positive declaration, require the developer to complete an EIS based on a wide scope of potential impacts with properly noticed opportunities for public participation, and then, and only then, make a final and informed determination on the appropriateness of the developer's proposal. So I'm hoping that you will agree that these documents belong in the record of the online documents available. And thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Josh, Jim, I'm trying to review these discussions.
Before we start moving on to the next item of business, we want to take a motion to suspend the public hearing until the board concludes its, until the board makes a determination of significance. So that will be suspending the public hearing to a date that's not certain. So we'll have to pull it again once a new date's been set.
Feelings?
I think that's perfectly reasonable. I mean, I had heard everything that was stated in that letter before at other meetings. And a lot of what appeared in that letter, I believe, was addressed by Dutch County Wastewater Authority. I wasn't at that meeting, but I did read the transcript. And Gretchen has done a very good job of keeping the files up to date. It's very complex. Things are organized by year. And it sometimes takes a little bit of digging, but I don't think it's an unreasonable ask that people go online to see the documents and then there's always the fallback that you can come in here to town hall. So I would be happy to make that motion. And I will wait until other people add their. And I will wait until other people add their say.
Anyone else have a different conclusion? Or is there someone who would like to second that motion? Any further discussion from planning board members?
Well, before you take action, it looks like you're somebody who wants to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's not out of order. I want to remind the board that the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has not as yet issued its permit for this site. So that is important to keep in consideration. Yes, we were very impressed by the Delaware County Wastewater Authority and their ability to manage sites like this. But without the actual regulatory requirements in place, their very knowledgeable and experienced ability in run wastewater treatment should be treated as secondary to the terms and conditions of that permit once it's issued.
Is we're well aware of that?
You're referring to the speedies permit?
Yes.
All right. My motion, I have a second. I have a... Sharon, you have a second. So I think in this case, I'll call the board. Correct?
Aye.
Sharon? John?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Can I just say? Everything that's online is not going to be everything that we receive because it's a basic application of everything that's on there. Anything additional, people can come in and see. The online information was done as a courtesy to the public. It's not something that we have to do. It's something that we chose to do to make it a little bit easier. But I can't put every single letter that comes in on there, which is why it's just a basic application, for the most part, on there. So people will need to come in to see the additional materials. And they are announced at the meetings that they have been received so that people are aware that they do this. So I just want people to know that it's not like I'm going to put every single letter that everybody writes on every application in there.
Can I speak to that? Or do I need to come up to my...
Yeah, I just wanted to say because I think Gretchen is attempting to explain to you why...
And I would respond that it seems also undecided that this very important set of documents that the public and concerned neighbors have submitted are not there. But it's a lot of stuff from the developer. So I just would like that balance. But I thank you for everything you posed.
It's the side of the developer which the updated materials. That's what goes on there. So there are other applications that have some comments and letters from everybody, but they don't go up there either. It's whatever we receive as updated materials or reviews or studies or anything like that that does go up. So...
I'd like to move on. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It will be suspended until when?
A date and time to be determined.
Based on what?
Based on when we get through the process. Is that what you said, John?
Which process? The SEACER?
Aye, that's a fair question.
Sorry, I cannot hear you.
And you know...
Can you hear me now?
You understand, your question is not being recorded. Just want you to understand that. So if this is important, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Prenilia Gallo with 340 Agrohook Road. And I just wanted to clarify that the public hearing is being suspended for further...
Yes.
And I guess the further part.
Yeah, fair question. So the next procedural step that the board needs to take in its review of this project is to make a determination of significance pursuant to SEACER, the state environmental review law. So what's being proposed with regard to the public hearing is the board feels like it has sufficient information to begin the process of making a determination of significance. And what that requires is that the applicant has submitted to the board an environmental assessment form, Part 1. It's up to the planning board as the lead agency to complete Part 2 of the environmental assessment form. And once they complete that form, then they will make a determination of significance, meaning either a positive declaration or a negative declaration. And they'll complete Part 3 of the environmental assessment form, which will set forth what their decision is on that question of positive declaration or negative declaration. So what we're talking... The process of completing the EAF Part 2 is probably... Given the long history of this project and the complexity of the project, it's probably going to take more than one meeting. We're going to be... One of the items that's on the planning board's agenda for tonight is to discuss the logistics of that. And we have to figure out how to fit in the process of completing Part 2 of the environmental assessment form and how that's going to sync with the other work that the planning board has to do on other projects. So what we're talking about is suspending the public hearing until the board has gone to the point of issuing its determination of significance. And then, the public hearing will be reopened, regardless of which path the review follows after that point. If there's a positive declaration and there's an environmental impact statement, there'll be a further public hearing where the public will be able to comment on a draft environmental impact statement that's typically submitted by the project applicant. If there's a negative declaration, the environmental review pursuant to SEACER ends. But the board... That's not the end of the board's review of the project. The project also requires site plan and special use permit approval from the board. And there'll be additional public comment in connection with that portion of the board's review. I know that's long-winded, but I hope that helps.
Thanks. Thank you.
Make one more comment? I'm going to beat this to death. In support of putting the documents that I've mentioned out on the website, the spreadsheet that the lawyer helped the group of concerned neighbors prepare was actually requested by the board that we created. So if that helps decide whether this information belongs out on the website or not, I think in my mind, it does. So thanks. And I also... The next step... Can you clarify if that is... Is it Part 1 or the whole project? And can it happen before the speedies permit happens?
So the environmental review process that takes place pursuant to SEACER is the first part of the board's review. The board conducts an environmental review pursuant to SEACER, which is a state law. And as I said, the determination of significance is the next critical decision point in that process. And that's the point at which the board will decide if there is... They'll issue a positive declaration or a negative declaration. If they issue a positive declaration, then the state environmental review continues. And the applicant will be asked to submit to the planning board a draft environmental impact statement. And the planning board will review that statement. That draft environmental impact statement will be made public. And there'll be a public hearing so that the public can comment on the draft environmental impact statement. The draft environmental impact statement will also be sent by the planning board out to its own consultants for comments from them. Once the process of taking comment on the draft environmental impact statement's been completed, then it would be up to the planning board to take all that comment provided to the applicant and ask the applicant to provide a final environmental impact statement. Once the board receives that, then the board would issue what's called a finding statement as lead agency. And that would be their final decision as part of the SEACER review if there's a positive declaration. And usually, what a finding statement is, is it discusses the environmental review that's taken place and if there are conditions on the project or changes that have to be made in order to bring... To mitigate the potential adverse environmental impacts that have been presented by the project, those will be embodied in the finding statement. And the applicant will be required to incorporate those changes into the plan. And then, once the finding statement is issued... Again, we're still talking about a tract, a positive declaration tract. Once the finding statement is issued, then the board would go on to the second part of its review of the project, which is the review of the project pursuant to the Town of Rhinebeck zoning law. And so the board would be getting into the site plan and special use permit review. There will be... As I said, the public hearing is only being suspended, not being terminated. So there'll be public hearing comment opportunity when the review reaches the stage where the board's reviewing pursuant to site plan and special use permit. The other tract that this could follow would be if the board issues a negative declaration pursuant to SEACER, then the state environmental review process ends at that point. And that would be the point where the board's review would then move on to the review of the project pursuant to the Rhinebeck zoning law, looking at the site plan, special use permit requirements. And again, there would be an opportunity for public comment at that time. So you'll have to refresh my recollection as to your other questions.
Where's the speedies? Can you make a determination before the speedies permit is provided?
Well, the normal practice for planning boards when a speedies permit is required is to require... Is to play... If the project ends up receiving an approval, is to place a condition on the approval which requires that the approval doesn't become final until a speedies permit is granted by the state. Is there another... I thought there was one other thing.
Thank you. That was a very good explanation.
Prenilia Gallo, still at 340 Agrohook Road. Will there be a scoping session? Did I get the term right?
Okay, so there's been a lot of talk about scoping. And so a scoping session is a very particular point in the process. And that only happens if... A scoping session only takes place if the board issues a positive declaration as its determination of significance. And if that happens, then before... And I apologize for neglecting to discuss that step. But if a positive declaration gets issued, then the first thing that the board would do is... Its first responsibility is to put together a scope. And what the scope really is, is just... It's the list of items that the applicant is required to study in the environmental impact statement. The EAF Part 2 covers a wide variety of different topics. And if there is a positive declaration, that's only going to cover potential adverse environmental impacts that have been identified by the board on the EAF Part 2 that are moderate to large in scale and then have been determined on top of that in Part 3 of the EAF to be significant. And it's usually... It's usually those moderate to large impacts that are significant that forms the table of contents, if you will, for the scoping documents, which is the list of things the applicant is sent out to study. Having a public comment element to deciding on what the scope is is optional under SEACER. But in this instance, if we did reach that point, my recommendation to the board would be that there be at least one opportunity for public comment prior to finalizing the scope. Does that make sense?
Yes. Thank you, John, for all the details. Thanks.
Sorry to keep this dialogue going on forever, but Jeff Poten, again, 15 Agrohook Road. I am a former federal employee, federal official at U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, Office of Water. I am very familiar with the speedies regulatory process, but not very limited understanding of the SEACER process. But DDC has a great deal of discretion in the level of regulatory requirement that they apply to this project through the speedies process. It could vary dramatically depending on how critical the agency feels this environmental impact is, given the nature of receiving orders and other aspects, the wetbacks, for example. So I think... I understand. I really do appreciate the procedure that you laid out. But it's important to note that there's a wide range of requirements that could come from DDC pursuant to the regulatory... The speedies regulatory process. It's not a ministerial process by any means. So I'm vague about how that would play out with the SEACER process. But it's just important to understand that DDC could offer very strict regulatory requirements. And the SEACER process needs to somehow be competent of that range of responses from the agency when they do come.
There's been a... Discretions come up. And there's been a recognition in the courts that lead agencies can rely upon the expertise of agencies that have been charged by the state with fulfilling the responsibility of examining applications for speedies permits and for making determinations about what conditions should be placed on a permit if it's granted by DDC. So in this particular instance, the planning board is going to defer to the greater expertise of the Department of Environmental Conservation with regard to whether this project complies with the speedies requirements and what the appropriate standard should be applied to whatever effluents going to exit the plan. So I'm just mentioning that because that's what you can expect from the board going forward.
So what I would suggest is to keep in mind that once those regulatory requirements are issued, the permit is finalized, it would be important for the board to bring back the order of authority to make sure that they indeed have the competency to manage the facility. First of all, the developer to build out the facility according to those requirements, and then the authority to actually manage the facility pursuant to those requirements.
Thank you.
Well, so do you have a motion on the public hearing?
We did that. We did that.
We closed it up. Look here. And we kept hearing it. It was suspended. Yes, I missed one.
So I'm not sure at the point that we want to discuss how legal this is. Is there something you want to...
No, so I was just giving up during kind of the overview of the process. John did a great job of that, so I don't think we need to do that again. I will just point out, as John mentioned, this is the Part 2. You've done this before. You know what this looks like. This outlines all the areas of the country. So we have impact on land, impact on geological features, surface water, groundwater, flooding, air, plants and animals, agriresources, aesthetic resources, historical archaeological resources, open space and recreation, critical environmental areas, which I have to use the notes because we don't have any in Rhinebeck. So that one is... Impact on transportation, impact on energy, impact on noise, orbit of light, impact on human health, and consistency with community plans and community character. So as you know, we've gone through them before. That's the form we'll be going through to do the Part 2. And then that really feeds into Part 3. When we get to the Part 2, I will, you know, be working with John. I will be drafting, you know, pulling from all the information we have, trying to summarize all the information for you so that you can... These questions get answered by the Part 1 questionnaire that Mark, you know, others have put together for us. But there is a ton of backup information that, you know, we can also pull from to answer some of these questions as well. So I'll try and work, you know, with Christian and with John. We're going to summarize all of that stuff. And all of that will eventually be folded into the Part 3 as a discussion of what those were reviewed and then kind of how that plays in. But we'll get to those details. This is the Part 2 that we will be working through. And I can pretty much say with confidence that definitely more and more people will... We will be at this, I think, for several meetings.
So I prepared for the members of the board tonight just a little... package for you to take home with you. One of the documents is the Part II of the EAF. It really would be a great idea to just go through this when you have a few moments and get yourselves familiar with the questions and, and the sub-questions and what's being asked, um, because, um, I think that some of these questions are difficult, are going to be difficult to answer on the fly, they're going to take a little bit of thought. I think one of the more difficult aspects in this particular instance is just the sort of long history of this project, and there's been a lot of information that's been submitted, even just since the project was, um, moved to a purely residential project, but we have to make sure that a review reaches back to, uh, everything that's been submitted by both the public and the applicant, uh, sort of from that point forward. So, I, take, take a look at these questions and, um, you know, start jotting down, you know, uh, if you have questions of your own, um, if there, if it turns out, as we're going through Part II of the EAF, that there's, uh, there are pieces of information that you don't have or that you want, you can, the board can ask the applicant for that information. So, it's good to give some thought to that and just, uh, get yourself oriented before the meeting. Um, and the other, another piece in the packet is, I just gave you, uh, this is a flowchart for SEER that was written by the DDC. Um, the yellow is "You Are Here," um, and it will just put the, I'm hoping that it'll kind of put, um, what you're about to do in the, in a larger context for you. The last part of the packet that I prepared for you is an excerpt from the SEER handbook. The Department of Environmental Conservation, uh, has writ, wrote a SEER handbook that is written in question-and-answer format, and, uh, it's on its fourth edition now, but it, I have it with me all the time, is, because it's really a great resource, um, and it answers a wide variety of different questions, and the section that I excerpted, uh, for you, and it, I think it's only about 15 pages, but it's the section on determining significance. And again, um, if you have time to breeze through these questions and answers, I think it might really tee you up well for, uh, the process of going through the EAF portage. Um, the other thing that I want to mention is that, um, in addition to the EAF Part II, another tool and resource that DDC has made available for lead agencies is, uh, something called the SEER workbook. And, um, what they, uh, it's available online, it doesn't really, I mean, I've printed it, it's like 237 pages, so I didn't print it out, it's actually easier to work with online on the DDC site, because you can hop around with the hyperlinks, but, um, the workbooks go through every question on EAF Part II, and they have a discussion about what the intention of those questions and sub-questions are, and what I found even more helpful is, they have certain examples, and sometimes those examples can really crystallize what, um, what DDC is after in creating the, um, EAF Part II, uh, questions. So, I want, I wanted you to know that that's there. I think there may be some instances, as you're going through the EAF Part II, where we, we may drop down and refer to the workbook and see if we can, um, uh, get some guidance, but just don't be frustrated if you feel like you need something more, that's something that does come up, uh, fairly often, and the workbook is a place that we can go to, um, try to get some more guidance on, you know, to help you make a decision on a particular item. Um, and so, I think tonight, uh, you should, uh, talk about logistics, you're going to have to figure out, I think we're talking about definitely two meetings for going through the, uh, EAF Part II. I don't know whether Jim will have suggestions for you about how to do it, um, sometimes some boards that I've worked with have gone through and, um, for want of a better way to describe it, sort of picked off the easy questions first, the ones that, uh, they didn't have difficulty in answering, and then sort of put the other questions, uh, into a basket and come back to that, uh, after you've gone through, uh, the questions that are easier to answer. But it'll be up to you to, you know, to decide what makes the most sense for you.
John, is there any particular reason why these sections are ordered the way they are?
Not that I, not that I know of. Uh, they just have broken, you know, they've broken up the 18 categories, they're all different types of, uh, potential impacts.
But they don't belong on one another in that sequential way, what's meaningful.
Yeah, and I think, um, that raises a good question, though, because, yeah, one of the things that you'll see that the EAF Part II is asking is that they want you to, um, assign a magnitude to the impacts that you identified, and, uh, so there's a, there's a box for, uh, no or small impact may occur, or moderate to large impact may occur. And, uh, again, I want to say that sometimes boards tend to struggle with trying to assign a magnitude to, uh, particular impact that they've identified, and, uh, some, the, the workbooks sometimes have, um, again, helpful examples that can, uh, that can provide you with some guidance on that. Um, and then, so all of this is sort of oriented, this whole exercise is oriented toward figuring out if they're identifying what the moderate to large impacts may be, the, the process that we've been engaged in up to this point is not, uh, I understand the comments that, uh, Jennifer Grossman made in her letter about an EIS, but I will tell you that DDC does, uh, support, um, the process that we have gone through so far, is a, a process that has been followed by many boards, where there's an issue, there's an initial review of the project, and this board has already gone through the process of figuring out what, um, impacts are of concern to you, and the applicant has had an opportunity to provide you with information, to make changes to the project, or to, uh, find other means of mitigating the concerns that, uh, have, uh, been on the minds of the board thus far. It's, the applicant, obviously, would like to have you initiate a declaration for the project, that, uh, every applicant wants that to be the path that follows, and as a result, applicants are typically very motivated to, uh, during this stage of the process that we've been through, to make changes that, uh, will, uh, address the concerns of the board in the hopes that it's, they're going to mitigate all of the, uh, impacts that are identified below the point of significance. And, um, so that's, that's sort of the, what's been happening up to this point, but there, there comes a point in the process where we have to draw a line, and you have to make your decision, and we're there, and, uh, and so now you're going to go through these 18 categories, and you're going to find out based, after all the changes that have been made, you're going to be, um, evaluating them, uh, with regard to, uh, to that criteria. And then, when you're finished, if there are potential moderate to large impacts that have been identified, then the next question that's going to come in is whether those moderate to large impacts are significant. And again, you'll see, if you look at the SEER handbook and if you look at the workbooks, you'll see that there can be moderate to large impacts that are not significant, and again, there are examples are provided to illustrate that, uh, concept. So, you, you'll have to, you know, in the end, you're going to be exercising your own judgment, um, but the point is to try to give you as much help as possible and provide you with as much guidance as possible. The Department of Environmental Conservation wrote the SEER regulations, and they're an independent, objective body, so it's a good place for us to be going for, uh, getting help and guidance as you move forward. So, anyway, I hope that's helpful. I'm going to give you these packages, and, um, maybe Jim can circuit, Jim just had the link up for the page, the workbook page on the DDC site. If you put "New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, EAF Workbook," you're going to get the right ticket. And, uh, so I think, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. I, I do want very much for you to feel like you have a comfortable understanding of where we are in the process and, and the purpose of the steps that you're about to take, um, so please don't be shy about asking questions of me or Jim, and, um, and then you can start talking about logistics and how you want to go about the process.
This, we're going to be going through this process in public forum.
Yes.
And so, it's just there, there's not going to be the public hearing. People will still be welcome to come and listen to our deliberations and hear what our judgments are in real time, and I think it would be important for people, like, you know, there's not an opportunity for them to speak, to, at least, come and listen and understand that, you know, we're taking all concerns into account.
Yep, that's absolutely true, and I, and just to explain further, maybe, if it isn't understood, that the decision to suspend the public hearing, uh, is made so that the board can vote, you're going to, you'll find out when you start going through Part II of the EAF, that it's going to require a lot of focus, and there'll be a lot of discussion amongst board members in answering those questions, and we really wanted to just sort of clear the space that, uh, so that we can have a, uh, undistracted, focused discussion on these issues, because the questions you're going to be answering, some of them will be hard, but, you know, all the deliberations will be done at public meetings, and definitely, you know, people can come here or watch the recordings on PAM. Any other questions? Okay, I'm just going to hand these out for you. Um, I know paper is kind of old school, but, uh, I thought this could be some, something you can just bring to the meetings with you.
All that information and everything else is available through, you know, essentially the landing page for SEER, which is ddcny.gov/regulatory, backslash permits, backslash licenses, backslash SEER, and all links for everything related to SEER are found here, discussions of negative declarations, positive declarations, um, who fills out the Part One, Part Two, and Three, everything John discusses in here, the handbook link is here, um, it's all in your flowcharts that I think John's handing out all over the place.
And, and sorry, John, this first column is references chapter and verse to, this is the applicant's, um, Part One. Well, Part One.
Well, yeah, it, it, that's right.
So, that's where, that's where the applicant feels that they've adequately addressed this particular question, so we go and look at that.
Yes.
See if we agree, maybe they've left something out, there might be another way of looking at it.
Yes.
So, we're going to kind of be using this document as that document and comparing the two.
Absolutely, and I think maybe, um, Jim, maybe you, maybe would be a good idea to circulate the most recent version of the EAF Part One as a board member, so, so that they can, because yet that's definitely...
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, I think, once to us, let me discuss how you want to proceed. Gretchen has left the room, but this time I was going to ask her to give us a sense of upcoming meetings. Gretchen, we're wondering, um, if you wish to begin to schedule this, would you give that, um, I'm assuming you all agree this is not going to take place anywhere.
Yes.
So, we're all on the same page with that. Um, you have the option, as John suggested, to, um, not go necessarily in the order which it's presented. How do you, I'm looking for some feedback on how you want to approach this.
Okay, so, so can I start with a suggestion? Um, I know you guys work so hard, and you're on a two-month, um, two-meetings-a-month track, which is tough. However, if you can bring yourselves to do a special meeting, uh, where all you have to do is just this, that's worked well for other clients of ours that, uh, not everybody's on a two-meeting-a-month track, but it's worked well for, uh, other clients of ours, because it allows you to, you know, you guys already have crowded agendas, um, it allows you to just think about one thing and be prepared for just one thing, so I, I, you have to do what's best for you. I'm just raising that in case you have a thought of that possibility, that's something that's out there.
Could we maybe do between Mondays, like, um, between meetings on a Monday, and we just have a special, uh, SEER meeting per week?
As long as the news is going.
Yeah, we have to check with John.
We have to check on it.
It might be the, uh, legal thing, practicing.
Sometimes they're not always on, uh...
So, what's that, in between, in between the...
So, yeah, we do every other Monday, so we can do the Monday, between the Mondays, but we have a regular meeting.
Well, let's start with, is that, is that option acceptable to people?
If it is, then we could ask Gretchen to check into available dates, if you're willing to give that extra time.
Yeah, although, Jim, what do you think is the best way to get started?
Starting from Monday, yeah, because we started kind of...
The reason I'm saying is, it might be to have a meeting at a regular agenda where you go through, you go through the whole EAF Part II and just sort of talk about what, just talk in a general way about sort of what your reactions are, and get a sense of sort of, do we have moderate to large impact on everything, do we have no moderate to large impacts, you know, those would be the extremes, where are you, in the, in the middle somewhere, to find, and then, when you, and then set a, a special meeting to get, really get into the, you know, after that first pass, to get into the weeds of, you know, what makes sense. I mean, you guys don't do this all the time, so it's sort of, part of this is orienting yourselves and get, getting yourselves used to the process.
I like the idea of scheduling it, you know, coming up, and then if we have significant time, we need more significant time than scheduling a, a special meeting.
I would suggest there are some features of this that I, I haven't heard a lot of concerns raised about, and maybe we want to look at those as a little hanging fruit, uh, you know, impact on energy.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, things that, um, uh, you know, the archaeology, uh, resources, historic and archaeological resources, there, you know, there's a lot to discuss there, but I, I think the ground has been pretty well covered, and the water resources, the traffic, the neighborhood character, those types of things are maybe going to require a little bit more intense discussion, so...
Yeah, and, uh, going through at a regular meeting, you're sort of going through that triage process of kind of figuring out what the landscape's going to look like going forward.
Okay, so, would that meeting, John, then just be, the board, you know, in your free time, um, takes a look at the Part One, figures out kind of what's there, how it relates to the Part Two, and then we kind of walk through the Part Two, just utilizing the Part One, in that meeting, we're not going to dive into, you know, where we find that specific fact in the, the materials that the applicant's provided, and not going to do the long, you know, introductory or Part Three write-ups, it's just a preliminary...
Triage process, and I would put it at the, I'd put it at, make it the last agenda item, so, uh, you can just sort of put the other things out of your mind and then just kind of go through the list, and, and like you said, do, if we can circulate the EAF Part One so that everybody's got it, and if everybody can take a look at the EAF Part Two, familiarize yourself with the questions, I think you will be able to make some good progress at that first cut.
So, then at, at our next regu, at the end of our next regular meeting, we would kind of have a jam session where we figure out what the agenda is for the first SEER meeting.
Yeah, and I think you're going to have a better feel for, um, what the task, you know, what the parameters of the task are going to be at that point. And just to fill in also, so, Jim made reference to, uh, you'll have the assistance... And just to fill in also, so Jim made reference to, you'll have the assistance of your consultants when, you know, we'll be working with you, and then for the writing up the E A F part three, we'll be help, you know, doing a draft of that for you, circulating it to the board.
What does the September 16th meeting generally look like? Do you have any idea? I mean, tonight we've obviously moved a lot of things to the October 7th meeting.
And anything from our last meeting, so we only have three new applications. At least four public carings and one new on the 16th. What I can use on the 7th is limit new applications, either I can close out new applications, I can do two, you know, we can talk about how to.
All right. The other thing I would point out, just in case we might need, is I am looking at September, and it is one of those wonderful months when we normally get two weeks between meetings because we have set early, so two weeks from the 16th would be the 30th. If we go through some things on the 16th and feel we would want to schedule a special meeting, we might be looking at that because it's two weeks out. And, you know, we jam us up at the other end, but it is a possibility to look at and that there's some space in there. Is everybody okay with this?
I won't agree on the 16th.
Okay. Well, we'll miss you.
I have to discuss that with you.
Yep, yep, well, we'll all confirm with other planning board members. I guess it's only the least that's out here, but if anybody else has an issue with the 16th, please let us know as soon as possible because it's important that you get as many as you can.
Yeah, it's an important.
Looking at the calendar online, the 30th doesn't occur to have anything right now. I know every other Monday when we're not here, or can be in here, so that's something I have to think about.
All right, we've got a bunch of options up there. Everybody content right now that this is the direction we're satisfied with?
Yes.
Okay. Don't think I need motion or anything now at this point. All right, John, we suspended the public carings, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the public forum here. We will continue to look to you for your input. Thanks very much. This evening, we have a simple business from that before us, and that is the, Edna is returning. That is the application of Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss, Akron Road Site Plan Review for Destruction of the Home and Welling Covered Terrace and Innen and Urban Affairs. Mr. Leary?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Dan Leary, I'm an attorney and a partner with the law firm of Orlando News Family Rights. I am the attorney for Darren Prince and Kelly Swiss, owners of the vacant parcel on Akron Road. The property is classified in, I believe, the R C five zone, where it's a permitted use, it's a single, where a single-family residential dwelling is a permitted use. I think it's before you because of the provision in your code that says that if a property is substantially contiguous to historic district or historic property, it needs site plan from the planning board. Toward that end, the applicant, I was not on the application at that point, I believe, submitted a phase one A to support that it would not have any adverse impacts on historic resources. And then, in addition, and it was part of your supplemental submission that was transmitted to you in early August, there was a second one that addressed the issue with direct access out to Akron Road. In addition, there was a flagging or delineation of a wetland that shows that the original proposed access would be going, you know, going through that wetland. And I believe there was a myriad of other documentation that was submitted. I have Christina Duchamp with me from K D A, and if you will, she'll just give you an overview of what we submitted.
Thank you. Gretchen, can we pull up the documents?
Jim's got it.
The most recent ones?
Yeah, the most recent submission in August.
These are all the files you submitted, the third one in particular?
The E nineteen though. All right, so, so we have, we have a document here, we have a number of additional documents that support our position here. Really what we're going to talk about is that the, the application has come down to the driveway location. I mean, we, like, as Dan pointed out, we're talking about allowable use, it's a single-family residence, and the area was subdivided a long time ago. And the reason that we're in front of you is because it's contiguous to a historic resource. And based on that, we've looked at, we've done archaeological studies on two driveway locations on the property. Basically, one that we want and one that we don't want. And both of those driveway locations, based on archaeological information, resulted in no impact. There's no, there's no evidence of anything that leads to one location versus the other, there's no, there's no material in the other location. So I think if we can scroll through this document and look at the appendix. Yeah, let's go through this. So, so in terms of the wetlands, so, so what we're looking at here, so the blue line indicates what we had flagged. And so this is a vernal pool that exists on the property. And what we don't want to do is highlight it highlighted in red. So this is basically representing from the house location to what was originally approved on the, kind of like on paper subdivision, which is the red line driveway goes straight through the wetlands, and additionally includes a very large cul-de-sac, which then heads out to Barrett Tyler Drive. We don't want to do that. We want to do green lines, which is the, basically approved on the subdivision location of the house going straight out to Akron. And a few of you were on the site walkthrough with us when we walked through, we actually had like all of the trees mapped, we looked at them, and we said which ones are standing in. So we looked at this green driveway and went towards Akron. We don't want to do the red one, particularly after we got the wetlands mapped, the afterlife, it goes straight through it. And then if we go to the next appendix. So on the, on the left-hand side, shows kind of the aesthetics of the proposed driveway that we're looking for. We have to use this, this lane for access for utilities either way. So in order to bring electric and utilities through this area of the property, we're going to have to remove the trees either way. And none of the trees that we've removed currently are over 18 inches in diameter. And we saved all of the trees, but we didn't remove any trees in this giant area of the cul-de-sac that was previously approved off of Barrett Tyler Drive. And we're trying to create an aesthetic of a rural driveway that comes off of Akron and goes up to this property. On the other hand, on the right-hand side of the screen, this, this driveway we can't use for construction access, so we've got to remove more trees anyway. We've got to remove about 20 trees to create this cul-de-sac that we don't want. None of the neighbors have used this cul-de-sac today. And it's like, I think that when this was approved, like, the town was in a different state of mind, like, we're not looking to promote cul-de-sacs. I think we can all agree at this point in time. We're, like, no one else has even been using this, like, the multiple, all these properties coming off of this, none of them are using it right now. Go to the next slide. So along Akron Road, there's, there's currently a stone wall which is crumbling. And we have what we're proposing on the left side of the screen, the small red line is the amount of stone wall that we are looking to remove and then reconstruct the edges as cheek-end sections of the driveway to preserve the historic, historical integrity of the wall. And on the right-hand side of the screen, if we, if we don't do that, the whole wall's crumbling, and we're not going to reconstruct any of it, and we're going to create a giant cul-de-sac off of Barrett Tyler Drive that's not historically compatible with anything the town's looking for. So there's two driveway slope considerations, so this gets a little technical, that essentially the one on the top, the very beginning of it from Akron Road up to the house, the house site that we're proposing, the very beginning of it for 60 feet is slightly steep, and we're proposing to pave that with asphalt. The alternate driveway has two very large, not only does it go through the wetlands, it has two very large bridges that we would have to clearcut and significantly, significantly alter in order to create a road for them. So you've got, I mean, the slopes are on there, you've got 16% slope, and a 12% slope, and a 9% slope, these are steep slopes. And when you, when you create a driveway through that kind of slope, you're not only impacting the area that you're actually creating the driveway, like, what is a driveway? Like, 10 feet wide? You have off to the sides, you're ticking down trees, you're also on the slope, it's not a good situation. So we met with the highway supervisor back in February, and he said that the, the property worked, and he said we had to carve back a little bit of land, which we agreed to do, and he said there were no issue issuing the driveway permit. This one shows the wetlands. This is basically, I mean, this is a kind of repeat of the first slide that we showed, but this is the actual surveyed area of the wetlands that we would be disturbing if we put the driveway where we do not want to go through. This one shows, so, so in blue here, it shows the, this is a cul-de-sac that we don't want to build. And in red is the portions of road that have already been developed by other neighbors. So essentially, starting from the bottom of the screen, you've got a long driveway going up to lot three, that long, that long driveway. Then you've got kind of a partially developed driveway going up to, basically between, between these two lots. This is our lot, this is undeveloped, and this one right here kind of, kind of comes up, but even though, this has not been built. This is a cul-de-sac, a giant cul-de-sac here. And the two bridges that I'm talking about are like right here and right here. So if we're going to build here, we've got to plow through two giant mounds if we're coming through this, this direction. And we got this guy, and we've got, you know, this up here that have been allowed to proceed without using cul-de-sac, which was developed for all the lots in this original subdivision. So basically, at this point, like, it makes no sense to develop a cul-de-sac for like, for like one or two houses. So this document shows the trees that we've removed. So, okay, so the red ones, the red ones are over 18 inches. So this is what your code says is significant. It's basically the threshold, we've mapped everything, we mapped from six inches up to 18 inches, but the 18 inch are the ones that are highlighted in red. The pink ones were dead, and the blue ones were trees that were over 18 inches that we actually reviewed with the members of the board that came on site, that did the walkthrough with us. We were pulling flags live out of the ground, saying like, we care about these trees, we're not going to remove them. That's all these blue ones here. This one, this one, this one, this one, and this one. And the green circles are the trees that we would like to plant to create an allay down the driveway and supplement the trees that we've removed, which were either dangerous or, you know, not viable for whatever reason. So we're, we're looking to create a driveway that aligns with the historic nature of the town, restore the wall, and come up to this house in a way that doesn't destroy the wetlands. I don't think we need to go through this whole document, it was submitted to you guys, but this is the archaeological study that shows that each driveway location was studied and that each one did not have any artifacts. So doesn't matter archaeologically which location we choose, there's nothing new And then this was suggested by the consultants, just a typical section of the driveway which we would be constructing. Honestly, it's either location, but I think the point has been made that a location that we don't want would be significantly impactful to the environment.
Excuse me, can you clarify, you said the consultant did that drawing?
Uh, no, this drawing is, is submitted by K D A, but it was part, it was in response to the memo from C P L. It was, it was requested, like, a detail of the driveway, so that's why we're submitting it.
So these things, just so everyone's aware, because we just received them, your responses have not been referred back to C P L.
Well, we submitted in time for, for this meeting.
But they have not been referred back to C P L, and they will be based on this meeting, so they all have a chance to respond to the information you've submitted.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have some other information to offer this evening to all the board members. We've been doing some, John has done some work, Jim's done some work, Christian is here, he has some other questions. So John, is there any particular order you'd like to go on?
I don't think so. Do you want me to start? So John Lyons, from Grandin Lyons, the counsel to the board. So there were two purposes to the letter that we drafted. One was to provide the board members with a little bit of information that this hasn't been on your agenda since springtime. And so we wanted to fill in for you what's happened between the last time this was on the board's agenda and tonight. So that's the first part of the memo. And I'm not going to go through all of those details. But it tells you what happened. There are exhibits to the memo that provide photographs for those of you that haven't been able to be out at the site. You can see, a lot of them are photographs that were taken by Brian or from different perspectives. So you can see the conditions of the site. The other task that we took on was looking back at the subdivision that created the spot. And we wanted to make sure that putting the driveway in another location was something that could be done looking at the subdivision approval. The name of the subdivision was the Satiruvich subdivision. And that was approved by the planning board back in 2003. And three lots were created. And this particular lot happens to be Lot number two from that subdivision. So we have an expanded discussion of our research in the letter. But I'll just give you the highlights tonight. The key element was that there is a filed subdivision map. In connection with that subdivision, it's MAP 7418B. And it contains the following map note that says, Lot 1, Lot 2, and Lot 3 shall use, shall use a common access from Acrohook Road. This access has been approved by the superintendent of highways. And that's referring to what's now known as Barrett Tyler Drive. Said access shall coincide with the existing right-of-ways that was previously conveyed. And the owners of the lot shall be subject to reciprocal rights of ways and to a driveway maintenance agreement, which shall be set forth at the time of the subdivision. The right-of-way shall be contained entirely on the lands of Lot number 3. This map note is clear that all three lots, including Lot number 2, which is the applicant's property, shall gain access from the common access from Acrohook Road. The term, the use of the term "shall" is key. And in legal terms, that generally denotes mandatory condition. The common access that's indicated on file MAP 7418B is also referred to in the deed to Mr. Prince and Ms. Swiss, as well as in the prior owner's deed. However, the most important point is that ingress and egress being required from the common access is indicated on file MAPs, on the filed map. The planning board does have the authority to restrict development, provided that it does so in a way that gives notice to all interested parties. And the planning board is authorized to enforce the language on a recorded subdivision plot map. Here, the map note is clear, clearly placed on the filed map, which states that Lot number 2 shall use a common access from Acrohook Road. This common access is from Barrett Tyler Drive and not directly on Acrohook Road. So it was a condition of the granting of the approval of the Satiruvich subdivision that the driveway was going to come off to what's now known as the common accessway that's now known as Barrett Tyler Drive. Any questions?
Is there anything that shows Lots 1, 2, and 3?
Uh, there is. The filed map will show all three. The filed tile map for Satiruvich will show all three.
I can hear that.
Any other questions?
You bring that up right now.
It's the background to the document that you're looking at.
Yeah, this is the file map.
This is the file map. And the prior approval by the planning board was just for the subdivision. It was on the site plan.
So to answer the previous question, we've got Lot 1, Lot 2, which is our lot, and Lot 3.
Joe, a little of a common thought.
You'll need some subdivision. Sometimes you have to come back for second thing if the, if the house locations sort of require that.
Right. And if I understand correctly, it's not just the proximity to the Mansa Canyon, but also the presence of wetland on the property.
Uh, I, that's not my issue.
The reason that we're here is just the historical, the relationship with the story. That's what triggered the site.
But is part of that what we're looking at?
Yes.
So Jim, any other, well, if you, we could get back to Joe with other questions on the line. Jim has comments he wants to say.
End of session without staying in terms of wanting to see the subdivision.
So what's up on the screen? It's a little tough to see. This is, this is your parcel access. And this is the base map. It's a little tough to see. Your parcel lies.
Reover.
What's that?
We should pay for the reover.
We paid for the reover, we just don't have it.
The only, so remember, the only parcel I've been dealt with at all I agree with you did some couple of years ago.
Joe, two parcels have been developed. So there's, there's Lot, go back to our, go back to our drawing because you can't see it on top of it. So Lot, Lot 3 has been developed. And that has the house that's shown in red, actual location of Lot 3 residence in the red. And then Parcel B has been developed, which is separate from the historic property. And that has driveway off of the road that exists to the top of the sign.
But is that the original Mansa Canyon?
Well, so, so hold on. So if you go back to this, to the other one. So this guy up here was originally supposed to come off of this cul-de-sac. So this blue line was what y'all approved back in the day. Along with this, along with this, along with this, along with this. So what's actually been built is in red. So this guy down here, Lot 3, was approved down here and was built up here. So this red is what was built instead of cul-de-sac. This guy has not been built yet, but it kind of doesn't matter because he's the first one. So he's just going to go right in. And then this is the one that we're talking about. This guy up here was approved off of cul-de-sac. But he ends up coming off of the way up here.
Any other questions?
I guess so.
Any other questions of John? I apologize, I appreciate you first. Jim, you're next.
So, yeah, so I was asked to also kind of, you know, put my thoughts down on paper. And I can provide a copy for everybody. Essentially, you know, what I put in my memo for me at previous public hearings on this application, you know, starting back from when we did the pre-conference application on October 2nd, 2023, we did discuss, among other things, the fact that the applicant was proposing to install a driveway from the house directly to the Acrohook Road and asked why that was the case and why the driveway was going to go there instead of cul-de-sac dedicated area that was already shown on the plans. Only John's not pointing out, has the apartment written on it. From a planning perspective, and I think I've discussed this in the past, you know, utilizing a driveway that goes straight to Acrohook Road from provided cul-de-sac would make the most sense because it provides a single access point for several properties along a point in Acrohook Road where there's better visibility than can be found from the lots that run on Acrohook Road individually. Part of the reason we were bringing the property, though it didn't necessarily go all the way up to cul-de-sac, it did require it to come up on the cul-de-sac's right-of-way, for like a better term itself, to get off the street to Acrohook Road. And the location, you know, utilizing the road on that, that right-of-way over time as the other lots are built up could reduce the amount of overall disturbance that we required for construction on all the lots combined, not necessarily for one individually. You know, the proposal for the driveway from the house to Acrohook Road requires removal of trees. The proposal to do a driveway that goes to the right-of-way would as well. But that was all part of the original contemplated plan for the multi-lot subdivision. To go from the house direct to Acrohook Road also requires grading. Possibly cutting through the hillside will leave a lot of the engineering elements to Christian on that. But it looked like there were a number of issues that would have to be looked at related to the driveway slope to make sure that it was legal as it came off to Acrohook Road in terms of slopes and then having negative grade coming to Acrohook Road. Also potentially for special design considerations due to both length of the driver that might actually require a pull-off. We discussed those in a couple of applications. And as a result, it would be more potential disturbance. You know, all that said, we do want to acknowledge that the Prince and Swiss parcel, while having direct access to the cul-de-sac, would potentially have to overcome a couple of obstacles itself. Those could be potentially crossing that creek or stream that's been outlined with the wetland mediation. Although I think there could be discussion about where that driveway goes. I don't think it necessarily has to go exactly where it's been shown. I think there is an opportunity, again, it may not necessarily be easy per se. But there is an opportunity to potentially move out of the wetland into the buffer and maybe potentially even out of the buffer entirely. In my professional planning opinion, I do think the driveway should be connected to the cul-de-sac for safety, environmental protection reasons, consistent with, you know, all this contemplating previously.
Questions of Jim?
If the driveway was constructed, as you suggest, this so-called cul-de-sac has not yet been created. There isn't any need to create it, is there?
I don't believe so. We'd have to see the paperwork that was filed, the driveway agreements and the other things. I would say the reason why we'd have to necessarily do the cul-de-sac, it depends again on the driveway code, engineering considerations. But I don't know that I would necessarily say that we should go and absolutely develop the cul-de-sac versus just putting the driveway down there. We have to overlook that, what that entails. And I don't have a full respect. But I would not be in favor of creating a cul-de-sac.
Right. And especially since some of the adjacent driveways that presumably would have been radiating from the cul-de-sac have been taken care of in other ways. But having been to the site and having looked at the aerials, it really appears as though that is already ruined. I mean, it's not paved, it's not fully developed. But the outline of it is evident. And from having visited the site, it just seemed like, oh geez. Why go all the way up to Steveville and you can just kind of go across a little bit of oxculvert, you know, get more ready access to the property with a much lower impact?
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention about the, so there's been some discussion about the wetlands. But there is a New York State wetland that's on the other, that's on the other side of the road where the proposed other driveway meets Acrohook Road. So construction of a driveway and if there were to be alterations done to the west, the bank along the road to the west of where the driveway meets the road, both of those would require wetlands permits from DBC.
I'd like to just reform that. So we're, there is, you're absolutely correct. But it's across the road. So the road has bifurcated the wetland from the property in question. And the area that we're talking about potentially putting a driveway in is actually an active wetland. It's a virtual pool, it's a map, it's there. So there's.
We're going to look at all this. I'd like to get through our presentation.
Absolutely. But I just wanted to make the point that you are absolutely correct that there is a wetland across, across the street. But it's, it's, the road comes across it. So there is no wetland on, on.
But you'd still be disturbing the buff, you'd be within the buffer.
Absolutely, so fine. So we can get, we can get a permit for a buffer, but there's, there's nothing of substance even talked about there because it's all highlands.
Okay. Let's get the discussions in which now, but everybody can sit through all this and get through our stuff and then. I'm asking the planning boards now if they have any additional questions of Jim. Because he's made a presentation, this is our time to address him.
Can we have a copy of Jim's now?
Yes, you can, as soon as the meeting is over. Sharon?
Is this Lot B that comes in off of Mansa Canyon, is that part of the original subdivision? You said it was three lots, the original subdivision.
Yes.
I'm asking Jim.
I have to look. I don't remember. I have to focus on the Satiruvich subdivision. But there are.
I think, I think the 7418B created these three lots. I think the one that we're talking about that gets us access off of the old, I think that may have been a previous filed map.
Yes.
Because, because you have A, B, C, you know, the original file map would be 7418. And then amended to that would be an A. And then B is the second amendment, which created the three lots that we're talking about now.
Thank you for that point of question. Any other questions of Jim? Christian, you've had a chance to visit the site?
Yes, in addition to the review memo that we submitted in March, and I think we had comments regarding the driveway, geometry, location, site distance, the wetlands on the other side of the road, tree removal issues. Also like to know what the limit of disturbance is. If the limit of disturbance exceeds an acre to do what they're proposing, we're going to need to get covered under the general permit from the DBC. We need to get updated confirmation from the health department that the SDS that was designed for the subdivision back in '03 or '04 is still valid. If not, they need to get reapproval for that. And then more recently, again, the end of last month, I went to the location, I just kind of did a rough evaluation of the site distance. And the location where they're proposing this new driveway does not appear to have proper site distance as you look to the left as you're exiting the driveway. The code requires, it's 275 feet. That's section 76 dash 2B and C. Now, in order to achieve that site distance, they could cut back the entire hillside. But now they're getting into the issue of disturbance with the DBC wetland adjacent area. Ultimately, they could, you know, make their access over the right-of-way that exists on the adjacent lot. And although it wasn't party to any conversations when the subdivision was being created, the best guess says that the location for the three lot access onto Acrohook Road in the same location was due to site distance and safety issues.
Planning board, any other questions of Christian?
Planning board would have some say, some concern about cutting out of the hill.
They would, as indeed, I think, John, you've had some conversations with superintendent of highways?
Yes, I did speak to Bob Wyant in the last week or so. And I've asked Bob to send a letter to the board just discussing his thoughts on the issue. I think the, there isn't a question that, as you look to the east at the end of the driveway, that the site distance is probably sufficient. The question is site distance to the west and the degree of disturbance that would be required in that location to achieve the required site distance. Bob didn't think that was going to be insignificant. But I'm hoping that he's going to address that in his letter to the board.
So planning board members, any questions now to any of the presentations, we've got you many of the presentations, but just any additional information you'd like to discuss? There's a lot to digest. I know you're just getting this this evening. And I know you are just getting this this evening. So I think we all need to take some time to review it. And we'll continue the public hearing.
Are they reissuing the public hearing? Tonight's not.
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Okay.
How many trees were cut down without permit?
Oh, that, oh, that's on the trees that are in.
Let me just say that, so the issue of, they're on this evening at the request of the applicant and the applicants in turn to get back on the planning board agenda for discussion of the application. The issue of the notice of violation and the stop work order is being treated separately. So, that, I just wanted to let you know that that is the decision we're going to put in this map for discussion of the application, but the other will be reserved and will be ongoing that discussion. John?
I just want to say that the matter's been brought back onto the planning board agenda because there's a recognition that to some extent, the resolution of the notice of violation and whatever approval ends up being issued by the board need to dovetail. So, we're gonna try to, you know, run those two matters in parallel.
And it seems important to open the discussion again so that this information can be brought forward for all interested parties, not only just us, but the applicants as well.
So, I think the board should make available to the applicant the reports that, I provided a copy of my report to Mr. Leary tonight, but copies of Jim's report and Christian's report should be provided to the applicant so they can review those and address them as required. I believe that there were items in Christian's memo from March that had not been addressed, so those should be addressed. And then the board members themselves should digest the material that's been provided to them tonight, and then you can continue the review at the next meeting. I'm not sure whether it makes sense to reopen the public hearing at this point until there's a direction on what the site plan is going to be.
Okay, so we will be referring, taking the new information we submitted, referring that back to Christian, who will review that against his March 19 letter to confirm that he has received all the information he wants and that it's sufficient when he addresses the concerns he has.
We can't confirm tonight that the application is complete when we move forward to public hearing next month. And I mean, if there was a scenario in which public hearing had to continue, then that would be, that would be the case, but what would be the reason to not schedule public hearing for the next meeting?
I was gonna say as well, because I would think you would want the public to participate in this.
I think there's a lot in the information that we want to hear from what we can say.
Well, I think it has to do with the fact that until the driveway location is decided, the site plan really isn't final. So, the public should really be commenting on whatever the final, the actual proposed site plan is.
Well, couldn't the public comment on the all?
Well, it's.
I don't see why.
I mean, you could comment on anything, but it doesn't seem like it's a good use of the board's time.
So, John, so to clarify that we're only proposing.
Can I finish my statement?
And everybody else.
Please, please, John is speaking.
Go ahead, John.
It's a waste of the board's time, in my opinion, for them to be taking public comment on a site plan scenario that may not be the final site plan.
But we're not proposing a cul-de-sac for the driveway from Barrett Tyler, we're proposing a driveway off the back.
That's what you're proposing right now.
That we were here in April, and now it's four months later, and the only result that we've received from the planning board is to come back to the planning board.
You're lucky to be back at the planning board because there's a violation pending, and the board has no obligation to be continuing to process the review of this application.
We offered this meeting this evening to get a map contract, let me finish this.
Sure.
And we wanted to get as much information as we could from all of the interested parties that have presented information tonight. So, the fact that you have not been here since March or April is not our fault. We did not create that situation. We did not create the situation that led to a notice of violation and a stop work order. So, let's be clear about that. That's the solution. Stop, stop right now.
We understand that's your position.
One person at a time.
We understand that's your position. We don't necessarily agree with it, but we understand that's your position. What I would like to know is, what I heard from John about the original subdivision approval and the note, which the note does exist, I've seen it as well. But the question is, and he didn't mention this, is that something that can be changed by the planning board as the approval authority over subdivisions? And especially in a situation where, like here, there has been no usage of that road by the other property owners, and it's become effectively obsolete, in my opinion. A lot has happened in the last 20 years with a lot of things that transcend that note. Number one, the note references a maintenance agreement as well. I don't think, I don't know if you mentioned that or not. There has been no maintenance, there's been no enforcement of that because nobody's using the road. It's become moot almost. So, the question I have is, you know, not just, I mean, if you're just telling us that that's the note and that's what you're gonna stick to, I don't know what else there is to talk about. But secondly, there's a lot of things going on that have, you know, a lot of things that are going on. Even that, with the DBC is proposing new regulations that will come into effect in January that specifically target bernal pools. You should be aware of that, John, I'm sure you are. They're eliminating their whole prior model of 12.4, they're abandoning all their prior mapping, and they're gonna be focusing on that. What we're seeing is the road that, as it originally went up from the approval, will go directly through a bernal pool. That is something that didn't, may not have existed in '03, I have no idea. I don't know what they did with topography, they may have just laid a, you know, a map over land. I don't know what was going on in '03. But your job in 2024 is to look at this holistically and look at all the factors and not just look at one note from over 20 years ago and avoid. That's really what I think you should be doing. So, the question I have is, if we go on, what are we gonna be talking about? Are you gonna be receptive to us take, you know, providing more information about the alternative route, or are we, you know, where is this going? I mean, you know, I think you can eliminate that provision, especially because it's really, to me, has become somewhat moot. I haven't heard one compelling argument against it. And frankly, your building superintendent, I mean, your highway superintendent wrote that letter that we have that said it was okay in March of this year. And he knew about the cut, he recognizes there's a cut. And he said, once that's eliminated, and I understand the cut has to be evaluated, that's what you're saying, I get it, you're right, it does. But just to say, you know, as a matter of course, this is not gonna work, I just don't wanna be going before a board that's predisposed and not having an open mind to what we're gonna say and what we're gonna advocate for. Are we gonna have that?
The board's willing to consider everything we talked about, but in terms of whether the map note can be varied, I don't know the answer to that. You know that the normal course is that notes on filed maps do get filed, they're treated akin to deed restrictions. And so, they do, they do count, and the question is whether, and that previous subdivision had its own environmental review, the conditions that were attached to it had to do with the review of that subdivision at the time. I don't know whether that map note can be changed, but you're changing, you're changing your condition of approval of a prior subdivision to do it. So, I don't know what the answer to that is.
Okay.
But right now, the note is there.
Right. So, on your point, do we have a copy of the resolution of approval from '03?
I don't know the answer to that.
Is that something that we can get a copy of?
Can we get that?
No, I have to punch it down.
Okay.
We will take some time.
All right, that would be helpful, I think getting a copy of that. And the deed, I've looked at my client's deed, it's really not, it's more like a recognition of a right, of ingress and egress over there, not a mandatory, you have to use this, but it creates an ingress and egress. Of course, this particular piece of property has plenty of frontage on Akron Hook Road, direct frontage. So, you know, that's another factor, but I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna move forward, you know, I realize we have to respond to what you have, and if you have any copies of things that were referenced tonight, besides John's memo, if we can get a copy of that either.
We'll provide both Jim and Christian's.
Okay. And, all right.
My son has came in in draft form. So, now that we have accepted them this evening, they'll be available tomorrow as of, in the five and four.
All right, and we can reach out to Gretchen for that?
Absolutely.
And then, when, what would be the possibilities for upcoming dates to get on the general discuss this?
It's up to the board.
If we meet submission deadlines for one of the upcoming meetings, would be on the general?
Well, what's the next, what's the next meeting on this track?
Would be the 7th. We need some turnaround time for Christian to review the submittals. And we've just, you know, set ourselves a task that are in the next couple of meetings. So, it would be October 7, October 21, November 4, November 18, are the four next meetings coming up. My information would be to go out to October 21, to give us a little time there, rather than to go on the floor, we would go to October 21. Gives Christian a little time to review, gives us the chance for Gretchen. Let me just say, Gretchen is not hesitant to try and find the material for you, but after a certain period of time, those records get sent to the highway department for storage. So.
There are boxes.
I have to say that. I think first and foremost, please send us, or help us get copies of what is submitted.
Absolutely.
So, if you're gonna go to the 21st then, I think, then the goal would be to come for planning board members to come into the meeting on the 21st. You're gonna have recommendations from the consultants and to formulate your, I think, for the board members to have a position with regard to the driveway location so that the applicant can be given, you know, to answer that question about whether you're open to further discussion on the applicant trying to make a case for the driveway that the applicant's advocating for, or whether the board wants to require the driveway to come in from Barrett Tyler. And then that'll give you the direction that you can, you can do with that what you will.
Could that date be, I'm sorry?
Don't we also need a legal review on that note, whether the note can be changed or not? Need a legal determination on the note?
Yes, yes.
Because that'll be first before, I mean, obviously, more can come in with thoughts of where you think they wanna go, but I think that is big stuff.
But I think the board, for the purposes of getting intellectually prepared for the meeting on the 21st, is just go on the assumption that it can be changed. We don't know whether that's the answer, but if that turns out to be the possibility, then you'll be prepared to address the issue of whether you prefer one driveway location over the other.
I remember when we last discussed this, I thought that I would wanna see the site, and I'm wondering if others would like to see the site as well. I mean, in particular, I wanna see this bernal pool. Do you feel the same way? I haven't done that.
I think I had also mentioned that we wanted to see a flag delineation of the wetland that was on the property, and I don't know if that was ever done.
Yes, we were just, got free talking about that, that was always a question. On the bernal pool, bernal pools aren't always in existence this time, they're, you know, intermittent water, so.
So, we hired a biologist who came out and flagged the wetlands.
Who's that?
Mike Newicki. Mike Newicki. And he came out and flagged it, and then we had the flag certificate, which is what we had on the screen all the time.
When was that done? Was that prior?
In the spring, during all the rains, when literally the, yes, the whole, yes, because that's in the. The end of the season. April or March.
Another chance to look at that, and that will go.
Right, it was up on the screen earlier, you saw it.
If you just double-checked, if it was the pattern I'm thinking of, I didn't see a seal on it.
So, this is, this is the match from Marie Welch, who surveyed them, and if you zoom in on that, you can see she surveyed actually wetlands flags, they're numbered, so they're numbered one through 16.
When did she survey them?
She surveyed them March 26.
Of what year?
Of '24, this year.
Because it's cut off.
Well, we can get, we can definitely get a version from her that's not cut off, but that's.
And you also get a version that's finally sealed by her as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Now, in Mike's report, did he make any claim as to whether these are, that's a DBC wetland or Army Corps?
That is an Army Corps wetland.
Okay, if it's an Army Corps, it doesn't have the 100-foot buffer on it. These DBC wetlands do have 100-foot buffers, Army Corps don't.
Yeah, but that, that's a situation that's got to doubt to change.
Well, we're dealing with now, not about.
Well, we gotta deal with.
But is it not in Whitebacks Code that there's a buffer from wetlands? It's in Whitebacks Code, so that's why we have a 100-foot buffer because it's in Whitebacks, so it's not in the DBC or the Army Corps.
So, is there a written report from Mike Newicki that can be provided to the planning board? Just, Marie Welch is a surveyor, she's not a wetlands delineator.
No, so if you would like a report from Mike Newicki saying that he flagged these locations, that can be provided, but no, we went through a standard protocol, which is we hired the biologist to go out, flag it, and then we hired the surveyor to survey the flags, and we're presenting that to.
Okay, but in my experience, it's usually accompanied by something from the wetlands delineator that certifies that the boundary is a rock.
Like, I mean, if you don't believe that these are the wetlands.
You can go back and.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking for a document that we normally receive.
You want something else from Mike Newicki certified that these are the wetlands?
I understand.
So that we can run through it.
This is the most unprofessional application I've seen in eight years I've been here. And it's really unfair because they are doing what they're supposed to do and asking for what they need. You guys did what you did to get you here. I think everybody needs to respect everybody, otherwise you're, it really, it looks ridiculous. Go back and watch the video. It feels like there's a bunch of kids in the room.
All right.
There should be respect given all the way around.
I have, we have discussed reconvening on October 21st. Is that correct, you know?
Yes.
My request to visit the property is still hanging there. All right, can we arrange that? We'll be speaking to the applicant, we'll identify some dates, we'll notify everybody on the planning board as to when that opportunity is available, and those who can make it will, perhaps we'll get a couple of dates so that we have the greatest possibility of everybody to participate. So, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah, and I'm coming in late here. Was there a site visit already?
There has been. Was there not? Yes. Sharon was part of the site.
Okay.
But I think Edna is saying that there's some information that is going to help her review this in her mind.
Okay.
Are you objecting to a site visit?
I have to speak with my client about it.
All right, well then, okay, well, we'll leave it as we are making the offer, we are suggesting to planning board members, you may discuss it with your client, and you can get back to us and let us know. We won't chase you, you come to us.
I will, I will. I move we move to technical one.
Okay, so we're rescheduling, but we're not opening the other public hearing, is that what we're saying? We're rescheduling the next meeting on this application for October 21st. We have, I have motion. You have, I have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, extension motion first. Thank you, everyone. We have one last piece of business here this evening, and I have a ZBA referral, case number 1063 provided.
So everyone remembers, guy was in the fourth planning board, again, in the last month. This is the whole construction sports court in front of the structure on Morgan Road. They attended a pre-conference meeting on July 15th, the August 19th meeting. We talked about how they're seeking relief from the front side yard setback requirements. This is a sports court that had all the grading with the three terrace walls. Yeah, talked about the future house next door and everything else. So they're at the ZBA requesting the variances that they need. As you remember, we recommended that the planning board ask the ZBA to also inquire if they were so inclined about the potential to shift the court associated grading retained walls further into the property to reduce or possibly eliminate the need for that side yard variance. I essentially have for your consideration tonight, two, two resolution options. The first one, so the second one is the typical variance response stating that we don't find any significant environmental concerns from the destruction. I shouldn't say sports court, I apologize. The first one essentially is stating that the variance request for the location of sports court in front of the principal structure raises no environmental concerns. I don't think, I mean, I heard that at the meeting when we discussed it, but the side yard setback does raise concerns because of the proximity to the property line. And that would be based on my comment. And of course, you're always welcome to edit either of those or something entirely different. Maybe this should stay.
You were suggesting that it could be moved.
I'm suggesting it should be considered. I'm not an engineer, and actually, I think that we recommended this actually is going to go to Christian to be looked at. You're going to get this one.
Where are you?
Because it has so much retaining walls, 800, it's almost 850, linear feet of retaining wall on three different terraces within a couple hundred feet.
Hudson River?
Hudson River. So my recommendation again is just that, you know, you can say that you might have some issues with the variances, and maybe do what I stated, that it's not being in front of the principal structure, but it is a side yard setback. The ZBA has your sitting memo that I gave to you guys for their first meeting, actually, they're on the ZBA meeting soon after our meeting last month. Or whatever, whatever you'd like to write down. Those are the two I kind of came up based on our previous discussion.
How tall are the walls?
Is that, how tall are the walls? I think there are three, four foot walls.
Yeah, anything four foot on it does clearly require detail that's oriented by a P. It's over four foot and it does.
And we wanted to have him take a look at it, but there was drainage concerns and other things, so I wanted to just clear it up. It's not the retaining wall per se, it's more just all the terracing drainage that's related to it. Just making sure you kind of look at it, give it kind of a glance over. It does, it does seem like it's good to go, because we are close to the Hudson River, and there's some, the last two slums down there.
I got the feeling from what was presented to us at that meeting that it was a little heavy-handed and ambitious for the setting. It didn't really seem to be respectful of the surroundings, and it, I didn't feel it was appropriate, so I don't know how to fit that into what we would say to the ZBA.
Sharon and Larry are going to look at it.
Is there, can we, based upon, not, the site wasn't not being posed or not happening just yet, is there a way to push this, or respond still to our next meeting?
Can we wait two weeks, Gretchen?
I think so.
I think the site visit would be helpful. I remember from the presentation that there was, another spot was looked at, but was not plausible or would have potentially more impact on the environment, or whatever, at this point.
They'd have to take back it down at least one day.
Yeah, so I think that site visit would be helpful, maybe it's an issue.
So if you let the ZBA know, we will respond after our next meeting?
They'll be in front of the 18th, so...
So we'll save this one for now, and we'll get back to the other thing.
I have no other business to work for. Workforce housing.
I have nothing to present. You know, plans are up here, and they are available online. We talked last time about whether I have any comments on workforce housing that relates to SEAKER, any significant issues. Again, plan's going to come to you for site plan review, but if you have any serious significant environmental concerns or other things related to SEAKER, the town board is going to start acting on SEAKER soon, and now's the time to get back to them with comments. If you still don't know quite tonight, I think you can probably wait another two weeks based on my knowledge of when this is going to happen. I think it's not happening immediately after next meeting, so I just opened up for the discussion and thoughts. As a group, certainly you can do it individually.
My microphone's set, so nothing to say.
Well, we have a different consulting interview on that project, because CPL is the design engineer for the workforce.
Yes, we're not asking Christian any questions on this one.
I do have a question on, to me, on the Rockford. It's almost like a game, let's go up, go up, go up. Can people be little, can you come up, just three minutes, whatever? Can I just keep coming up and joking around? It seems to stretch out the meeting, and it's become almost unprofessional, the talking, and it's not just with this group, but...
It is a, I, I've been doing this for a number of years, and it is always a challenge to strike what I consider to be the appropriate balance between offering the public the greatest latitude in terms of their opportunity to make remarks about a project before, versus our feelings sitting here if we've heard it, and feel we've heard it, if we would. It can get tiresome, it can get repetitive, in this particular case, and in others. This is a very highly charged application with a lot of very strong opinions, and I appreciate their need to speak, and I also greatly appreciate the patience that this planning board has exhibited in listening to things that we've heard before in slightly various forms over and over again. I do believe, I hold on to the belief that in the long run, by providing the public with the greatest and broadest opportunity to be, are in the best position to make a decision and in the best position to defend whatever position we take in the end. I hate for us to be in a situation where they would say, "But you didn't listen to me," or "I didn't get a chance to talk." That is not really my goal. So I think we share the frustration, but I think it comes sometimes unfortunately in territory. And I do want to express my sincere appreciation for you. Patients are sleeping in both these applications. They're challenging, and it's hard, and we work hard at it, as John said. And going through the next steps for the Rockford application are also challenging. And so I know you're going into it with an open mind, but I'm working to get available for you, because I think we do beneficial transcriptions of what I consider to be two important parts of recent meetings, that being the presentation of the Justice County Sewer Water, oh, Water and Wastewater, sorry, and the CSF in Mafia, because we didn't have those reports in writing. And I do believe that the presentation made by Water and Wastewater was extraordinarily beneficial, providing very specific answers to not only the public's questions, but our questions. And so I want that to be in written form, so that as we're going through those sections, we can refer back to that. I personally, as great a job as they do video, I can't keep going back to that. And so I want, I want us to be able to look at something and say, "Oh, that question was asked, and here's how they answered it." So we're working to get that sort of background information, because, you know, other things, the original Craig Manning report, we have the written report. We don't have much from Mr. Rockford in terms of independent report, except his response to it. So we're working to get that, and I hope we'll have that with a minute of space. Anything else?
I'll move it closer to you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.